Hear me?
Yes, I can.
Good to see you.
Good to see you as well. I good to hear from you.
Yeah, I know. Let's see if I need this powder.
Hey, Ty, I'm gonna sign in under two computers in case I need to project anything on my other computer.
Okay.
Thanks.
Good evening, Councilmember Bracco.
Hi, Cam. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. It won't let me turn my camera on. It says you stopped it.
Um, hmm, I did not, but I can certainly see if I can try to have it on.
Yeah, it's saying the same for me too, Ty.
Oh, yes, me too.
Me too.
Oh, boy. All right. I started all the videos here.
Okay, because the message is you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it.
Well, I have now allowed it. That's one of those weird things of Zoom.
It's working now.
Yes.
There you go.
Oh, yeah. Hello.
Hello.
Everybody.
Hi, folks. Hello, I still have City of Gilroy on. I don't see it. I'm gonna try to connect my audio to these little earbuds. So if I get if I if it doesn't work, I'll disconnect.
Councilmember Marks, what do you see in your screen right now?
I see City of Gilroy Seal, City Council Regular Meeting, today's date.
Oh, why don't you double click on it and you'll see every the whole view of everyone?
There you are. Okay.
Yes, so I just shared the screen just that everyone knows that they're in the right meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
Alrighty. Okay, got it. Wait, what did you have to do? Because I'm having the same thing. I have that screen and then I have all of us on the side.
Just double double click on the screen and it will minimize, you know, like make it smaller so you can see the rest of the other screens.
That made it worse.
Oh.
Good view, Marie.
I just had small pictures.
I can turn my screen off right now.
View and go side by side gallery.
Oh, all right. That's where I was side by side gallery. But now it's smaller than it was. Wait, full screen. Okay, that's where I was before. I thought. Yeah, I thought you were saying we'd see everybody as a grid, but I just see everybody in one row on the right. Yeah.
I can turn off my share my screen at the moment right now. That way you can see the whole gallery. There we go.
There we go. Oh, now this looks normal.
Good evening, Andy.
Good evening. Hi. It also seemed possible in that last view, there was a vertical line just to the left of the people's things and you could drag that across and make the shared screen smaller. I never knew that before. I never noticed it. It actually increased the size of the people.
Mm hmm.
That was interesting. I never never somehow just experimented. All the wonderful things in Zoom.
I know.
We have five more minutes.
Ty, when we get to the interim community development director appointment, can you let John Biggs in?
John Biggs, of course. Uh, I'm not seeing him on the attendee list.
Okay, actually, I.
Went to mute Jimmy.
I I'll keep an eye out for him as well because I could let him into, I guess.
Okay, yes.
You're already recording though, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So we can start at six on the dot.
Very good.
If you ever want to see a video, what can go wrong when when being recorded before council meeting, I believe it was. City north of Oakland, I can't remember what city it was, but.
Yeah.
School district.
A school district thing, I know.
That'll make a cringe.
I know.
All right, I will go ahead and have my video turned off.
Okay.
And also muted as well.
Okay, you are going to display a flag, though, when that time comes, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That answers my question.
Oh, and hello, Senator Laird.
Hello. Good to see you. Is this like your green room before you go on? Is that what's happening?
We're waiting for six o'clock. Yeah, for the. For the actual start time. I wonder about you. I get a little nervous not logging on early enough, just in case I'm gonna have login problems.
Well, you know, years and years ago, when I was a mayor, which was many years ago, speaking to this veterans group. And I show up and I think I've many a time and I open the door and they're halfway through an introduction of me. I had no idea if I'd have been a minute later, I'd have missed.
Oh.
So it always makes you nervous and want to be there.
All right, 5:58. We're getting there. Well, the governor lifted he lifted the mask mandate effective February 15. Yay, yay, yay. Six o'clock?
Not yet. One more minute. Just want to say to give me a few seconds when I put the flag up.
Very good.
Okay.
Well, as you know, it'll take me a minute to read all the required reading I have to do.
Yes. Mayor, I have six o'clock. Would you like to start?
As do I. Yes, I would. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Calling to order, I would like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to enacted Assembly Bill 361. The city was previously complying with the Brown Act orders issued by the governor, which were aimed at containing the novel coronavirus and which expired on September 30, 2021. This bill gives local agencies the authority to continue to host virtual meetings until January 1, 2024, as long as California is under a governor declared state of emergency. In order to continue meetings subject to this exemption to the Brown Act. The city council must make findings by majority vote every 30 days that the current circumstances have been reconsidered. And that the state of emergency continues to impact the ability of members and the public to meet safely in person. Or that state or local officials continue to impose or recommend social distancing measures. The city council will consider whether to make these findings at least every 30 days until the governor lifts the state of emergency. City Hall is open to the public during regular business hours, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed online via Zoom and Facebook Live. The public has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you are calling in, press star nine. The Zoom call in information was provided on the posted agenda as well as on social media. All right, I'd like to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and I've asked Councilmember Tovar to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance.
To the republic for which.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for invocation, I believe Malcolm McPhail is here.
Yes, I did see him. He is trying to connect through audio. We'll just try to give him a few seconds here. Oh, and he just logged off.
Logged off?
Yes, I think he has internet issues with his phone.
Okay, well, we thank you, Malcolm, for trying. All right, city clerks report on posting the agenda and go ahead and go right into roll call.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the agenda was posted on February 3, 2022 at 9:26 p.m. I'll go ahead and do the roll call. Councilmember Armendaris.
Here.
Councilmember Bracco.
Sure.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lido Munoz.
Present.
Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Councilmember Tovar.
Here.
And Mayor Blankley.
Here. All right, before I move on, I want to say happy birthday to the three of us on the council who just had birth. Well, two of us who had birthdays and one who's got one coming up. So Councilmember La Romanos was January 26. I was February 4 and Councilmember Hilton is on the 13th. So someday there's going to be a law that says you can't have three Aquarians on the council, but we'll see. So far, it's okay.
Happy birthday, everyone.
Yeah, happy birthday, everyone. Okay, under orders of the day, I. Seeing none, I don't have any. We don't usually employ introductions. We have none ceremonial items. We have none. So that brings us to State Senator Laird, who's going to give us a 15 minute update on the happenings in his office.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be with you. I'm in my office in Sacramento. We were in session today. And in the recess, I was able to come by City Hall and meet with some of you was at the Historical Society, had lunch with people downtown. Did different things in downtown. It was great. And normally, I am staffed. By a Gilroy native on my staff, Justin Tran, who is not with us tonight because it's his birthday. So he, I think, is eligible now to serve on the city council. But he would have normally been here. And when I have been reporting back to cities and I have 21 cities in the Senate District and I was in most of the city halls, if not all of them by the end. During the recess, I've been looking back and we're almost to the point of looking forward totally, but just briefly, last year, we had. Probably the largest budget surplus that has happened in modern history in California. We had roughly $75 billion above projections. By the time we were done, half of that either was returned. To taxpayers in the term in terms of assistance for COVID and small business assistance. And then the rest of that half was put in reserves. The reserves in California have grown to $25 billion. And the other half, we used to address long term intractable problems, deal with. Broadband across the state and trying to bring more people into connectivity. Childcare slots, rates and wages. We dealt with Medicaid. The age was dropped to 50. We added hundreds of thousands of students to student aid in the hope that we could get much closer to a debt free college, not a free college, but a debt free college. We really tried to put additional funds budget for impact on homelessness. And and then did things for housing in particular. So. Last year, that was a good year. Now here we go. We have another surplus. And 20 billion roughly will be taken right off for schools and another 5 billion roughly for reserves. Which will leave about 20 million and there's plenty of discussions today. We approved extending some of the programs for people to help them financially. Through COVID, we did have a rental assistance program that has expired, although if people were eligible, they can still. Get money from that. And for me. It was a good year in the sense that I chaired the Education Budget Subcommittee. We worked really hard on school reopening. We worked really hard on on a major restoration of UC CSU and community colleges and a major restoration of funding. Through K through 12. And we are now tomorrow, I have the third hearing of 10 hearings that will have over four and a half weeks. On next year's education budget and coincidentally tomorrow morning, the two witnesses I will have at the hearing on the K through 12 budget will both be from the Gilroy Unified School District. So the two witnesses will be from Gilroy tomorrow morning in the budget. And last year, I had 10 bills signed into law. One was on fire planning and making sure we just didn't plan for fire prevention year to year that we did. Five years together. One, I got an award from the League of Cities because there was a one year. Hyatus on the penalty for the implementation of the organics law that cities and counties. Have to implement to divert organics from landfills and that bill leveraged $70 million in the budget that will also be available for grants to the cities and counties to do that. And I also had a very difficult bill passed to facilitate the Paharo River Levy Project at the lower Paharo. Because it was, there's going to be trouble coming up with the local share. So the state essentially bought out the local share. So the federal government and the state government together will fund it. Right now, there's only five year flood protection through the city of Watsonville. And when I was in the assembly, the editor of the Gilroy Dispatch would frequently send me letters reminding me that more of the upper Paharo was in my district than the lower Paharo. And I am conscious of that, but I think in the entire system, this fits together. I'm looking toward. This year, we still have two weeks to introduce bills, but I just set a record on Friday for the fastest bill through a session. It's not a budget and the first one signed by the governor because the Watsonville Hospital has gone into bankruptcy. They sent layoff notices. They announced their intent to go out of business in December. It has been extended by the bankruptcy court to the end of March. So I had a bill through in just over two and a half weeks to create a hospital district. There's two more weeks to get a bid together from the hospital district. The bid has to be finalized by March 31. And then the public can buy the hospital and keep it open in Watsonville and we are working really hard. To make that happen. We also had two tragic incidents in Santa Cruz County. Of law enforcement killed in the line of duty, three in the city or county of Santa Cruz have been killed in the last eight years. Well, two of them had spouses of many years and kids, two kids each, but they weren't legally married. The kids are not entitled to the same level of survivor benefits and the widows. Were not as well. So I have a bill to adjust this so that kids are not penalized by the status of their parents if their father or mother is killed in the line of duty. And I have introduced that bill already to try to do that. And now we move into this year's process and I'm chairing a panel on climate change of of Senate Democrats to try to see if we can come to an agreement. I attended the the conference in Glasgow last November to see if we can get an agreement on what the next steps are that we need to take to to address climate. And I want to leave time for questions and answers. So one more hot topic, and that is the hot topic of redistricting. I was elected in November of 2020 to represent my district through December of 2024. I will do that happily and proudly and Gilroy is in the district till. December of 2024, but the Senate district that I represent moved a little south and east. So they're removing anything in Santa Clara County. They added San Benito County, Salinas to Salinas Valley. So the new district will have all of Santa Cruz County, all of San Benito County, all of Monterey County. And the northern 81% of the population in San Luis Obispo County. So I will have Gilroy for another three years, but then it will pass to the district that's now represented by Senator Cortez. And I just wanted to assure you that I will represent you strongly and firmly for three more years. And it's going to be hard to say no to people from Gilroy, San Martin and Morgan Hill if they ask me to do things even after the lines have switched. Because I have represented pieces of that for by then it will be 10 years in the legislature. So that, believe it or not, is the Federal Express version of a report from Sacramento. And I would be happy to answer any questions that any of you have on anything that's of interest with regard to the state or state city relations.
Thank you so much, Senator. Thank you for that presentation. Thank you for being willing to be here to talk to us, council members. Does anyone have a question they would like to pose while the Senator is with us?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Tovar.
Good evening, Senator Fred Tovar here. Good to see you again. In regards to your last comment about, you know, in three years, you'll be representing a different district other than Gilroy. And I know Senator Cortez will be sort of representing us. I'm hoping that prior to your departure that we can all meet together again with Senator Cortez and just sort of talk about the issues and get your input when we have that larger discussion. That way he is well aware of what sort of issues and some, you know, things that we're facing here in South County.
I would happily do that. And I have talked to him about it already. It's a transition that's off in the future. But I've worked on the flood control projects. I've been working on Anderson Dam. I've been working with the Water District about the the Cross Valley Canal. I've been working with the Water District about the the Cross Valley Canal. And I've been working in the past with Supervisor Wasserman about the agland preservation and the conservation programs from the state and many, many other issues. Housing, for one, particularly in what the state has done to Morgan Hill with regard to their previous initiative. Happy to to make sure that that people are up to speed and they know exactly what's going on.
Yeah, and I'd appreciate that. And again, I I've met Senator Cortez several times, but given the uniqueness of South County, you know, it'd be nice to have a really large discussion with him prior and giving getting your feedback and your input as well. Um just to make sure that Gilroy is not forgotten, you know, so I would appreciate that.
Happy to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Armandarris.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh nice to see you, Senator Laird.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Um I'm wondering about the surplus money and the spending. Can you tell us specifically what kind of funding went to homeless services or if there's under anything coming around the pipe for for homeless services? Because Gilroy is one of the most impacted cities in our county.
Well, that's one place that I want to work with you a little because it's it there was twelve billion dollars appropriated over multiple years to be able to expand Project Home Key in in some of the other services that that are being delivered. And the problem that exists is there are some places in my district where the homeless issue is disproportionate to the size. So I mean, in Santa Cruz, the uh the homeless population per capita is bigger than San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose, Los Angeles, San Diego. And yet, the funding is on a per capita basis. So it doesn't come down the pipe in a way that there can be budgeting for impact. And uh uh some of us are looking for ways to address that because it it I mean, we we have worked with Caltrans on issues in Gilroy and on issues in Monterey. And there's disproportionate populations in San Luis Obispo and in Santa Cruz. And in some places, Monterey, northern Monterey County is one. Some cities do services, some don't. And as a result, there's gravitation in certain places based on the fact that there's absence of services in others. And we have to address that because the homeless issue among smaller cities, and believe me, it's smaller compared to Los Angeles or San Jose, not small cities in general, i- i- is not working. And so
Yeah, we're, we are one of those cities that has a disproportionate amount of of homeless per per capita for for our county. So
I I want to continue to work.
I'd be happy to connect with your staff about that.
Thank you. And I'd like to say thank you for, you've been, your offices have been a big help with Caltrans to us. Thank you. I can attest to that myself. All right, Councilmember La Romanios.
Well, Mayor, that's a, that's a perfect segue into what I was gonna talk about. First off, Senator, it's always very good to see you. Uh you know, one of the the hot topics that is going on federally and certainly at the state level is around infrastructure. And in particular, uh local roads here in Gilroy suffer from a a very low level of our pavement condition index. And I just wanted to hear from you if you had any thoughts about either resources or support that the state might help provide to cities. Because here in Gilroy, we're looking at about an annual cost of several million dollars just to maintain pace with where we are. And that's, that's an unacceptable level where we are. But just curious about your thoughts on that.
No, thank you for the question. It's good to see you. It's it's always good to see somebody that's half Norwegian. The the uh um the thing, when I came and met with every mayor when I was running, I met with your then-mayor who highlighted the state of Highway one fifty-two through the city in Gilroy a- and the condition. I know there's been been an upgrade, but it is happening all over. And I think the hard thing is, is that the, I worked for Jerry Brown for eight years. Jerry Brown stepped up and did the the transportation measure. It provided, and it had to go to the voters to be sustained. It provided more money uh uh additionally for roads than has been done in three decades. And yet, I still get questions like you just uh uh did because it still doesn't meet what the accumulated need is uh uh of it. And so we have been hoping that that we could guide some of the federal infrastructure money, provided it actually comes to to exactly this. And I think it also is true, i- it's it's another one of those things that that the cost of roads compared to the population in smaller cities in California is a disproportionate hit to their budget. And that in in certain counties where you have more rural areas, it is almost impossible to to keep up. And so I I'm hearing about it all the time. We're putting it into the mix. We're hoping that this infrastructure money can help us make a dent in it. Because other than that, it's really about raising taxes. And we did it once and did it by the skin of our teeth. So we'll just have to see what we can get in the infrastructure bill.
Thank you.
For asking.
Yeah, those are great questions. Thank you again for your presentation. We're right on time. It's perfect. So thank you for being here.
My pleasure. I look forward to seeing you all soon. And I hope to see you in person sometime soon.
No kidding.
Thanks for having me.
Good night, good night. Okay, Agenda Item three point two. Uh public comment, uh members of, this is for members of the public to comment on items not on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Uh anyone who wishes to comment related to items not on the agenda, please participate by, if you're participating by Zoom, um use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press star nine. All right, I'd like to ask the city clerk if we have any public comments.
Uh there was one public comment that was writ, uh provided uh writ via email by Mercedes Chen, and you reported it already. Uh I do not see any raised hands at this time here, Madam Mayor.
None at all. Okay, then I will see no audio comments. Uh the public comment period is now closed. Okay, reports uh by council members. Councilmember Bracco.
Yes, I recently attended the library, uh Joint Powers Authority and some good things to report. Um our local library now is working with, or or the the county library is working with our youth task force to provide programs like the Godmothers and Late Night Gym. We also got a budget snapshot. Our our library system is in excellent condition, is is usually is. And we have been uh made, we have a five-star rating, which puts us in the top five libraries in the United States. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Armandarris.
Uh no report. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Marks.
Uh yes, I attended the Downtown Business Association meeting last week. And some good news is the farmer's market is thinking of relocating to downtown Gilroy starting end of March. And if you haven't been downtown yet to enjoy the benches, Jeff Orth has built seventeen of them that have been placed around downtown. And also, they had a lot of local artists get together and paint wine barrels that will be used as flower planters. And they will shortly be distributed throughout downtown to make everything look so much nicer. On kind of a downside, we had talked about PG&E having downtown up and running by May at the latest. But there is a transformer issue. And unfortunately, that has been delayed until August and maybe late September. So we're hoping for the best that this gets fixed real soon and everything is completed and our businesses can have power and be up and running. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor Blenckley. Um from Visit Gilroy California Welcome Center, the Board of Directors unanimously approved proposals to complete the Visit Gilroy website ADA accessibility pertaining to events, calendars and maps. The Board of Directors received a preliminary twenty twenty-one strategic market plan for from Articulate Solutions, detailing the results of the goals approved for the calendar year. All goals were surpassed significantly. Executive Director Howard will present a comprehensive report to the city council in early spring to share the outcome of the twenty twenty-one marketing plan in detail. The California Welcome Center reported to the board retail sales at the center for the month of December, where more than two hundred percent over budget goal. Walk-in visitors in December surpassed prior years by by over a thousand visitors. And total number of collateral distribution distributed during the month of December was over nineteen hundred pieces. From Silicon Valley Clean Energy, I'm continuing to meet with SPC staff regarding the progress of reach codes and current draft building codes for twenty twenty-three adoption. Um that will include all electric new construction for residential and commercial, along with EV charging stations located in multifamily residential. SPC is commit committed to staff, the technic, to our staff, the technical assistance and partnership they provide during public outreach meetings, and they will provide ten thousand dollars to cover the expenses just to bring the reach code up to a boat. The board approved the twenty twenty-two policy platform and six key focus areas for an ad hoc committee to address legislative and regulatory responses. The policy platform contains SPC's overall advocacy strategy on both legislative and regulatory levels, including positions SPC will take on upcoming bills. And um these are the protecting direct access, reliability, planning and procurement, transparency and accountability and rate making, public pa- public safety, power shut-offs, wildfire prevention and cost recovery, affordability and equity and decarbonization. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Just uh one announcement, our um our gourmet alley slash downtown ad hoc committee has, we've been, um we decided to delay our our next meeting. We're in the process of, uh we need to get findings of a grant that may help with the gourmet alley. So I think we're gonna try and meet back up in March. So Corinne Decker has been working extremely hard on those grants. So we hope to have some good news that can assist us with gourmet alley.
All right, thank you. Councilmember La Romanios.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of weeks ago, the Valley Water District had its meeting. I'm our city representative for that. And so I sit on the commission. I attended that meeting. We received an update on the status of the uh the drought. And and yes, it it looks from all intents and purposes to be a drought where we are currently. Despite the rain that we received at the end of December and the early part of the new year, much of that rain actually seeped just right into the soil and not a whole lot of it got into uh the reservoirs, which are currently at twenty-seven percent of their capacity. And unfortunately, the long-term perspective for rain in our region doesn't look all that great for the next uh next little bit of time. So uh Valley Water encourages people to maintain good water uh discipline. I'm happy to report that when the request was made at the end of last year to help reduce water use in our county, we actually reduced it fifteen percent from our twenty nineteen level. So kudos to everybody for helping to reduce water usage. Uh I will also say with regard to the Water District that they will be considering rate changes at their April meeting coming up. Uh the commission was able to provide feedback on this. And I shared our perspective that Gilroy is in a different place economically than most other places of the county to the north of us. Additionally, we are the location for the only real substantial agriculture that goes on in our county. So I was very clear to remind them of that and to be cognizant of that as they make any decisions relative to uh rate changes at all. So whether that happens or not, we'll wait to see. Uh but at least I put it out there for their consideration. That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. That's gonna lead into my report too. I didn't know if Councilmembers Bracco or Tovar would talk about our SCRA board meeting. So I'm gonna go ahead and talk about that. I did have a VTA board meeting as well last week, nothing specific to Gilroy to report. But at SCRA, you know, the primary source of drinking water in the cities of Gilroy and Morgan Hill is the Yaugus Sub Basin. And recycling water is something that is already underway at SCRA. Purifying water is something we're working towards, but recycling water is something we do. And anytime we recycle water, we preserve the drinking water that's in the basin. So just a few facts I I want to share. Uh SCRA's recycled water system supported nearly eight hundred and fifty million gallons of water for our communities in twenty twenty-one. And on an average, at on an annual average, that means thirty-eight percent of two point two billion gallons of water received by the SCRA facility was treated and used as recycled water. To appreciate uh SCRA's intake, the 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 sewage water, everything that goes into SCRA, fifty-five percent of all of its intake comes from the city of Gilroy, forty-five percent comes from the city of Morgan Hill. And given that thirty-eight percent was the annual average of wastewater treated, it's almost as though every bit of water that came from the city of Morgan Hill, smaller than Gilroy, actually resulted then in recycled water. And the other, the bottom line is, according to anyway, projections in the Gilroy Urban Water Management Plan, this recycling is estimated to be about sixteen percent of the water demand by our two cities. So in other words, you could say that sixteen percent of the sub-basin drinking water was preserved by all the recycling efforts that happened. So some things to to be proud of, um even though water purification is still something on the horizon. I also want to mention that our, you know, our council retreat next week, I'm really saying this for the public because all council members know about it. We all participated in how we chose the date, a date being that everybody could make. Um that workshop, we're gonna do uh February fifteenth. And it's going to address how how do we as a council respect that the people's business be conducted openly? How do we allow for all members of the public to speak on items on or off the agenda? And what are some of the behaviors that undermine the public's right to witness all information that goes into council deliberations? So things along those lines will be what we, some of the things anyway that we try to address next week. And that is my report. Okay, so moving on to future council-initiated agenda items, do we have any?
Yes, uh Madam Mayor, I wanted to make one if I could.
Sure.
Uh mine was gonna be for the city to consider an ordinance that would prohibit the use of plywood on windows in buildings in the downtown area.
Okay, uh uh downtown area being first to tenth, being fourth. Do you know? Have you?
Uh that that that, those kind of details can be kind of worked out, but just kind of the main thoroughfare along uh along Monterey. Uh specifically, the the rationale that I have there, I don't want to go too far, but the rationale is that uh in in terms of the visual appearance uh of the building sometimes downtown, we see that there there are businesses that will simply put a plywood in windows for businesses that are not currently open to the public. And it just creates a, it it doesn't create the proper image that we would like to convey to consumers, to residents, to visitors, whomever. So um that would be the the uh change that I would I would put forth for consideration.
Okay.
Mayor, can I ask a follow-up question?
Yeah, Andy, you stop us if we go too far because I never know where that line is. Okay, go ahead.
You know, I I think uh the mayor had just mentioned something. I think um, you know, sort of this ordinance, it would be nice to have it from first to tenth street because there are businesses along first streets that, you know, all the way down that uh either have plywood or just have not been taking care of their buildings. It'd be nice to have it throughout downtown. That's just my suggestion.
Okay, I'm I'm not quite clear on that. I was talking Monterey Street between, I was asking between first and tenth on Monterey. Is that what you meant to?
Yeah, yeah, first, yeah, first.
Yeah, yeah, let's use that as the boundary, first to tenth.
Fine, okay. Um Jimmy, is is it okay to ask Jimmy if that's an issue for staff before we all do a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, what I would, I would want to explain to councils, what we envision when you ask us something like that, is that we agendaize an item that is a a very short staff report that introduces maybe some of the options and and what the current practices. And then you as a group can decide if we want to go further into developing a a written ordinance or or how that fits into the, you know, the things that Seize is working in at the time.
Very good. I see a hand by Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Um uh Councilmember La Romanios, did, were you aware of the the window covering that already exists in the downtown area, that that ordinance? I believe it's five A. I don't know the language right in front of me. But if not, maybe staff can at least address that because that is something that that is currently enforceable right now.
Yeah, window, window coverings are are fine as long as it's not plywood. I I'm specifically interested in plywood. And if there's something, if there's already an ordinance that fully addresses plywood, then that's fine. But I I would just ask staff to look at that as an option. I I want to make sure that that is removed as an option.
Okay, well then what, Councilmember, did you have a question specific to what he's saying?
I have a question. Uh Councilmember La Romanios, would this be an ordinance that would apply to businesses that experience vandalism, might like as a a temporary, needed as something temporary, or would this be a blanket ordinance for any incident where a window covering is needed?
Yeah, I I would leave that to staff's discretion to identify exceptions. But I I think that sounds like on a short, short-term basis for the security issue for, you know, a day, twenty-four hours, whatever it is. The security issue for, you know, a day, twenty-four hours, whatever it is. Yeah, that seems like an acceptable exception.
Okay, thank you. Right. So all that is what would come of putting this on the agenda, discussing all those kinds of things. So why don't? Can everybody show me a thumbs up or a thumbs down for putting this on the agenda? And I see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven thumbs up. So Jimmy, there you go. All right, moving on to.
Air.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
I have no, and I know I had this discussion with Jimmy, but forgive me, Jimmy, if it's already going to be on. Agendized, but I would like to have a presentation done by the Garlic Festival Association and giving us an update because. As you know, that's right around the corner. And as you guys know, there's a long history of that and. Whatever we can do to assist or whatever the direction is, it'd be nice to have that discussion and see where they're at. So hopefully we can agenda it sooner than later.
I think what we, my recollection, Councilmember, is that we were going to have a presentation by the Garlic Festival Association. Was that not correct?
I'm trying to remember. I believe we were. I just wanted to make one hundred percent.
Yeah, we're supposed to have a presentation from them to let, let us know where they are and what, what they, yeah, if there's something they think the city can do. Jimmy, is that in accordance with what you remember or do you not want to comment?
No, that is what I remember. We did extend an invitation to them. To provide us a date when they would like to come back to council, but they haven't provided us a date yet. So we can reach out again.
Perfect. Thank you.
And we have met with them too offline, too. I know Jimmy and Leanne both and I, okay. All right, item six, the consent calendar. I'm asking council members if, if anybody wishes to remove anything from consent.
Mayor, I would like to pull six point two because I think it has to be discussed as some questions asked. Okay. So six point two is being pulled. So can I have a motion that only leaves six point one? So would anyone like to make a motion to approve six point?
I'll move approval six point one.
And a second? I'll say, okay, Councilmember Mark seconded. So Councilmember La Romano made the motion, Councilmember Mark seconded it. And we need a roll call vote for six point one.
Councilmember Almerdarras?
Yes.
Councilmember Braco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee Romano?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes. Okay, so item six point two. That's the resolution of the city council, the city of Gilroy making required findings to allow the continuation of remotely held meetings for the next thirty days. So I will. You know, I don't think I opened for public comment even on the last thing that we said, so maybe I should go to the public first. Do we have any public comment? If you would like to comment on anything on the consent calendar. Please, if you're using Zoom, use the raise your hand feature. If you're calling in, press star nine. City clerk, do we have anybody? Wanting to speak?
Yes, I have one individual and, and the attendee. Kristen Brown.
Okay.
Go ahead, please.
Hi, city council members. I did, I came in a little late, so I apologize if I'm not on topic. But I was, it came to my attention that you guys were going to address the opening of Christopher High. The Christopher High Aquatic Center.
Okay, can you, we haven't gotten to that item yet. Okay.
Okay, good. Okay.
You can save your, yeah, you're not late. You can save your comment. That will be agenda item seven point two. We're still on six. Okay?
Thank you so much. Okay.
All right. Are there any others?
I see no others, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so I'm closing public comment on the consent calendar and going back to six point two. Councilmember Marks, do you want to start?
Sure, Jimmy, in light of what was on the news tonight about Governor lifting. On February fifteenth, how does that affect six point two? Does that, how does that affect us in doing Zoom meetings?
Well, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to answer that right now. I have not read the order. I just heard about it a little bit ago. I'd have to consult with the city attorney and also with the county situation, but I could. It's certainly something we'll look at because, you know, we want to get back in person as quickly as possible, too.
All right, thank you.
If I can add, I, I counsel remarks to the chair. I, I believe that the, the. Virtual meeting provision that we're relying on still would survive, although I haven't read the order either. We'll have to look at it, but I don't think. It vitiates the ability of cities to do these virtual meetings pursuant to A B three sixty-one. But we'll find out for sure.
So in other words, if we're able to meet. At the end of February, then if we vote yes on this, we still would be able to, or if we vote yes on this, does this lock us in? Until end of March?
No, this doesn't lock us in. This allows us to do virtual meetings.
But as soon as we're able to get off virtual meetings, we will, right?
If the council chooses to do that.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a catch twenty-two because this doesn't, as he doesn't lock us in, but since. The council has to make that decision, you can't make that decision until the next council meeting. So by passing this here, we're going to be, we're virtual today and we're going to be virtual on the twenty-eighth. What the governor just passed, number one, doesn't, doesn't necessarily change any Santa Clara County law. It's just state and it just says you don't have to wear masks indoors if you're vaccinated. So even in our case, that, that would then ask the question, well, are we going to ask for proof of vaccination when people come in? You know, it kind of, if, if you were concerned. About the virus still.
And unfortunately, under A B three sixty-one that we're operating under. You, you have to renew the, you have to renew the authorization every thirty days, which is really foolish. Actually, it's a silly thing to have to do, but that's why it's on the agenda and. Many cities that are doing this simply put it on the consent calendar each month. With the expectation that eventually they'll go back to normal meetings, of course.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Sure. We just, we can't tell, I'll make one comment. I don't see anybody else's hands. We can't tell how many members of the public, you know, come to meetings and it gets harder to space everybody out. When there is still a concern with the virus. So we want to make sure that we're. Being safe at our, at our retreat that we're having next week. There's not an expectation of a lot of people attending because our agenda items. Like usual for, for the public. That doesn't mean they won't and then we'll have to. Address that if it hap, if anything happens that we can't control spacing. But for now, that's what this, this is allowing us to meet virtually. Absent a future council decision to no longer meet virtually. So. With that, I already asked for public comment on the consent calendar. So that included both. So is there, does anyone want to make a motion on item six point two?
Excuse me, I'll move to approve item two. Thank you.
Second. I can second.
Okay, so I heard, motion was maybe a Councilmember La Romano. I heard the second first from Councilmember Tovar and this requires a roll call vote.
Councilmember Almerdarras?
Yes.
Councilmember Braco?
No.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee Romano?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
No.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes. Okay, so that passed five to two. All right, item seven, bids and proposals. Approval of an agreement with Park Consulting Group for a not to exceed amount of two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. For EnterGov L M S Professional Services. And Cindy is going to be giving us the staff report. Hi Cindy.
Hi, good evening, everyone. In April two thousand and eighteen, the city council awarded a contract to S D I presence. To assist the city in selecting and managing implementation of an L M S. Land management system, including successful rollout of the system to the public. The L M S rollout had an estimated go live date by the end of two thousand and twenty-one. However, the project still has a significant number of outstanding action items. Given these delays and with the expiration of S D I's contract. Staff met with two other firms and signed a limited contract with Park Consulting Group. In November to evaluate the issues causing the delay. And advise the city on how to get back on track to system rollout. After working with Park Consulting, it was evident that they would be a better fit for the city's needs. Including but not limited to their direct experience. Implementing the Tyler Tech InterGov system for over twenty clients. Glenn Park, who is available this evening to answer any questions. Would manage the project and work with staff to address any issues that might cause further delay. The L M S is expected to go live in the October, November timeframe. But no later than the end of this year with this contract. Therefore, staff is recommending that the city council award a contract to Park Consulting Group. In the amount of two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for the scope of work included in your packet. This concludes my report and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Cindy. All right, council.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, yes.
Madam Mayor, I would like to point out that this contract is not new money that we're asking for. It is savings from the E R P and other contracts that we used for implementation. So we're essentially taking savings that we had and using it for this additional consultant. So no new money. We are still within budget and so we're not asking for that appropriation type. We're only asking for approval of the contract.
And was there any problem with the previous user?
Or there, essentially what had happened is that the term with the particular vendor expired December thirty-first. And an analysis was made that it would be better to expend the funds with a different contractor who's done. Many more of these and actually identified some of the issues we have. So. I wouldn't say there was problems. I would just say we think this vendor is better suited for the L M S. The vendor that previously did the L M S is the one that helped us with the E R P and we had success in that program, but we fill with the L M S. And where it's at, this new consultant could do a better job.
All right, thank you. Okay, so going to council, Councilmember Tovar, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think the city administrator sort of answered part of my question, but. I guess Cindy, my question is in regards to this consulting because I think we had a discussion or back to try and see if we can reduce as many. Reduce as many consulting companies as possible because obviously it's quite a big strain on our. Our, you know, our city budget, but I understand there's some that we can't do without, but. In regards to this one here, these. Was there an R F P or R F U sent out when we, before we decided on this company? I asked that question because again, and you guys have heard me say it for six years. I mean, these folks are out in Irvine. Down south and I'm just what curious if there wasn't someone else on the list that was. You know, local. So I guess those are my questions.
There was not an R F P because we're not seeking new funding.
Okay.
Did consult with two consultants and we did a limited, as I mentioned, a limited contract with Park Consulting just to test them out. And we were satisfied with them as the consultant to help us out.
Okay, but that doesn't answer my, my follow up question in regards to, again. You know, I'm going to say it over and over until the day I die about local business and. For me, this is not local business. So I mean, I'm just curious, was there not another company that we could have gone with that was much local than what this company is?
So, yes, so we did interview C S G, which is already on our consultant list to help us out with our planning. Department and also building permits. And we just felt that Park Consulting had a better, better. Understanding of the Tyler Tech InterGov system.
Actually, I could try to assist Mr. Tovar. There is no local vendor for this type of work. Really, the local vendor is in the state of California. These are kinds of projects. That we would get R F P responses from all over the country. And so. I, I know, I know you, we would love to have somebody at Gilroy or San Jose, but the vendors are not there for this type of work.
That answers my question. Thank you.
All right, any other questions, council, before I go to public comment? Okay, then moving to public comment, this is the time for public portion of the meeting. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you are calling in, press star nine. So at this time, I'll ask the city clerk whether there are any public comments.
I did not receive any written public comments, nor do I see, I do see one raised hand.
Okay.
Eric Howard?
Okay, you have three minutes?
Go ahead, please.
Eric, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
And I can comment on the flag issue?
No, this is agenda item seven point one.
My apologies, I'll leave.
Okay.
Thanks, sorry about that.
That's okay. Okay, are there any other comments?
I do not see any other raised hands.
Okay, thank you. So with that, then I see no other audio comments. Public comment is now closed. So. Either more discussion or possible action if anybody's ready to make a motion. Nobody's speaking?
Okay, also, I'll move.
I'll second approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Marks, seconded by Councilmember La Romano. To approve the professional services agreement with Park Consulting Group.
Correct.
That would be a roll call vote.
Councilmember Almerdarras?
Yes.
Councilmember Braco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee Romano?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes. Okay, item seven point two. Award of a contract to Swimming Swan L L C. In the amount of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. To serve as the Christopher High School Aquatic Center Operator. In two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three. This is project number twenty-two dash R F P dash A D dash four six three. So we'll start with the staff report by Adam Henig, Recreation Manager.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Adam Henig, Recreation Manager. I will present about the award of the contract to Swimming Swan L L C. To serve as the Christopher High School Aquatic Center Operator. In two thousand and twenty-two and twenty-three. Beginning in two thousand and twelve, the Recreation Department operated a seasonal swim program at the Aquatic Center. Services included swimming lessons, recreation swim, certification classes for lifeguarding, water aerobics and a private party rental. Each summer, approximately one thousand youth registered for swim lessons. And more than ten thousand people participated in recreation swim. Due to the pandemic related reductions of recreational services, the pool had been closed to the public. To reopen the center and offer residents swim lessons and recreation swim. A request for proposal was initiated for the services of an aquatics operator. Submitted proposals were to include a vendor's operation experience, qualifications and their approach to aquatics. Vendors were also required to demonstrate how they would ensure their fees were comparable. To what communities charged and. Provide an option for those with economic hardship to receive a scholarship or discount for swim lessons. The R F P was released on August twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one. While there was interest from potential vendors, only two incomplete proposals were submitted. When staff followed up with the vendors who had expressed interest but had not submitted a proposal. Their response was that it lacked a management fee. Even though the city would allow vendors to retain all revenue collected, which included swim lessons and admission fees. There were no other opportunities to generate revenue, making it financially unfeasible, according to the vendors. To attract more submittals, the R F P deadline was extended. With an option to request a management fee resulting in three completed submittals. Among them, only one met the minimum qualifications to move on to an interview. With the selection committee, which comprised of city and school district staff. The committee recommended Swimming Swan L L C, which also had the support of G U S D. Based in San Diego, Swimming Swan L L C was established in two thousand and fourteen. They offer individual and group swim lessons for all ages and all levels. As well as provide lifeguard training and management for community recreation swim. Their aquatic experience is focused on servicing homeowner associations. And hotels in Southern California and Nevada. The vendor can also offer a variety of program options, including swim lessons, lifeguarding and water safety. Instruction certification, water therapy, aqua yoga and junior lifeguarding. They manage their operations through a software platform that allows users to create an account and register in advance, making it accessible to the public. Swimming Swan plans to offer a robust summer program similar to what was previously offered by the Recreation Department. The president, Melissa Swanson, will be speaking more about it shortly. The two-year agreement requires a management fee paid to the operator of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year. With year two incorporating an inflation increase of up to five percent. The operator will oversee recruiting, hiring, onboarding and training lifeguards and cashiers, as well as providing janitorial support. The city will be responsible for all building maintenance, capital improvement, utilities, water slide, waxing and maintenance. And serve as the liaison between the school district and the contractor. The proposed agreement is for two years. The proposed agreement is for two years with an option to renew in year three. The need for access to a public swimming pool is high in Gilroy. In fact, in the 2020 Facility and Program Needs Assessment, access to a public swimming pool ranked as highest unmet need for households in Gilroy. In addition, having an outside operator provides a cost savings opportunity. To operate a city-run aquatics program for one summer that offers lessons in recreation swimming, it costs approximately $403,000. To contract out this service to Swimming Swan LLC, the city's net savings would be approximately $150,000 annually. This concludes my report. I'd like to turn it over to Swimming Swan Founder and President Melissa Swanson, who will share with you more about the services her company plans to provide the residents of Gilroy. And then we will be happy to answer any questions. Melissa?
Thank you, Adam. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, let me. Well, hello there. Can you see me?
Yes, I can see you and hear you.
Hello there. My name is Melissa Swanson and I am the President of the Swimming Swan. I thank you for your time this evening and for considering us to open and operate Christopher High School Aquatic Center. To give you a little bit on my background, I am a lifelong swimmer and professional aquatic professional with over 20 years' experience. Over the last eight years, we have grown our services to include a variety of programming at HOA Community Associations, as Adam has mentioned, and resort casinos, helping them with their lifeguard management services. Currently, our team consists of five managers, one regional director, and one HR professional. So we are ready to go for Gilroy. We are very excited about opening this pool. A few services that we are hoping to bring are learn-to-swim programming for children six months to 12 years of age, adaptive aquatics, aqua fitness, safety training, and certification classes. What else? Let's see, pool party rentals and concessions, and just overall, you know, management of the facility. What makes us different? I would say we are, we have the manpower to get this going. We have a robust technology platform, as Adam mentioned, and we are up to date on the industry best practices and standards of care. That's about it. We are very excited. I'm very humbled to present to you guys and happy birthday to the fellow aquarians here as well.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Adam, may I ask the effective dates? I know this is for 2022 and 2023, but specifically, what, what dates would the pool be open? Just to remind us all since it's been so long.
That's a great question. So it would start in early June and it would actually run until mid-August, which is when school starts. But then on the weekends, we would be able to offer recreation swim up and through October.
Through like the end of October, the beginning of October? That's not defined?
Most likely the end of October. That is the plan.
Wow, very good. And lastly, was the YMCA considered? And I ask that only because, just so that Melissa, you know, they operate Morgan Hills facilities, and so I'm just curious. Were they considered in, in, in this for Gilroy?
Yes, they were.
And they, okay, okay, I guess I'll leave it at that then.
Sorry, can we get more of an explanation on that? Because I, I mean, I just have my question too, so.
Yeah, tell, tell us what. YMCA, we all know them, yeah, so.
So the YMCA had expressed interest. They attended the walkthrough on the job site. They had actually also submitted a proposal, although it wasn't completed. When staff followed up, they decided to rescind the proposal. They just, they just didn't want to move forward in the process.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I believe you. I know I've, I've talked to some there and they just, it wasn't for them. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that they, they were considered. Okay, I'm going to go to council. But I, I know a friend, I see your hand up, but I, I thought I saw Councilmember Armand Darris's hand up first. And then I don't know between Councilmember Hilton and Bracco who was next. So I, I might just go down the line. You're all in a row on my screen. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Armand Darris.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for asking about the why. It was on my mind too. I know they do a good job at the other local facilities. So I didn't catch your name from, from Swan Swimming?
Melissa Swanson.
Thank you, Melissa. Thanks for coming.
I have a couple of questions. I'll start with the big question that I have. I noticed that in the proposal that there is, there is mention of scholarships and reduced rates available for families that qualify in terms of income. But it's my understanding that, that, that those are provided as a result of a grant that you received from the Red Cross. Is that true?
That is correct. Yes, Red Cross is among one of the providers that I've reached out to. We are in line to get the Centennial Program. They are waiting to hear if we are awarded this prior to giving the grant. But I am speaking to a couple of different organizations as well.
And how long would the Red Cross grant? How many years is that?
From my understanding, it's an annual grant and it's based on participation numbers and, you know, meeting certain metrics. So that's where we are.
Okay, and so if. So would it be available from, from this year or from June? Or would it be available after you've been in operation for a year? Is it based on metrics from previous years that we've operated?
Well, the extension is based on metrics, but from my understanding, I have given them the proposal based on 800 to 1,000 participants in our Learn to Swim, and I am talking to them about grants for 2022.
Okay, so it's that, that funding is specific for Learn to Swim program or services?
Yes.
Not for folks who want to get, what do you have available then for families who want to apply for the pass, for the summer pass? Or who can't afford, you know, the, the $10 entrance fee every day?
That's a good question. For the, the pass, we can potentially provide an incentive for that as well. We, for the grant funding, we're going to have an application process, so I can open that up to other services as well. I would have to cap that at a percentage. That is something I can do. Yes.
Okay, because I, you know, in, in thinking about grants and stuff, I know that they, you know, if they're annual, especially if they're not multi-year grants, and the funding runs out, I'm wondering what type of plan do you have to help other families that, you know, who, who wouldn't, you know, wouldn't be able to get funding from the grant if the money ran out, or if you weren't granted the, the amount that you're applying for?
Well, there are, there's the USSA Association, United States Swim School. They have a grant that we are applying for. There's also USA Swimming. I'm applying for a grant for them as well. And from, we have a very good working relationship with the American Red Cross. And I am almost certain that we're going to receive funding for this. If we do not, I have other means. I'm thinking about fundraisers that our staff can provide out to the public that, you know, can incentivize some of these grant programs.
Okay, well, it's, it's good to hear that, that you have Plan B and C and D in place and that it sounds like it's something. Okay, that's something, because it is, you know, a priority. Our, our community isn't all wealthy, you know, or able to afford these things. And we received a lot of feedback from the public about really wanting to move forward and open Christopher. And so I want to make sure that it's available to all of the members of our community. So I appreciate this being important for you. Thank you.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Councilmember Bracco.
Yeah, this is for Adam. Adam, who will get the revenue from the swimming lessons and the use of the place?
The operator. So in the original, the operator, so the contractor. In the original RFP, we had it so that they would collect 100% of the revenues. That would include swim lessons, that would include recreation admission fees, that would include private party rentals. And we still only received two submittals and they were both incomplete. It, it still wasn't, according to all of the vendors that we reached out to who had expressed interest, it just wasn't financially lucrative enough for them to, to want to submit a proposal. And then once we added the management fee, it then made it much more palatable. And that's when we received completed submittals.
How, how much do, how much have we brought in in the past on the revenue?
Between all those things, I listed about $160,000.
But Adam, I'm sorry, do you mean net, net revenue or gross revenue?
Oh, so, so that's just revenue that we collected. But keep in mind, it costs over $400,000 just.
That's the point I want you to make sure is clear.
And that's where the, that's where the, the cost savings comes in. Yes, we, we won't be collecting the revenue, but we don't have the overhead and the wages and all of the other costs that are incurred when you're running a city-run aquatics program.
So, so you're, you're telling me that we were spending $100, $402,000 a year? Because I've never, as long as I've been on the council, I have never heard that figure.
403.
Yeah, that, that includes full-time wages, part-time wages, that includes overhead. There's also sunk costs involved with, with a pool. So you, you have facility fees, you have maintenance, those are.
We're, we're still going to be paying that.
That's correct. So you're not even.
So you're not giving us the real picture.
So if you deduct those, those fees, the facility and the maintenance, it still comes out to $324,000.
Okay.
To run a city-run, yeah, thank you.
Adam, that's, I'm, I'm going to Councilmember Hilton next, but I want to clarify there. That's in, in total, you're saying that it's $150,000 less than cost when you take, right? That's what you said in your report.
That's correct.
Okay, total expense, right, that's savings, considering the fact that we still have to maintain the pool. We just in our last meeting approved that contract to fix the pool, fix the plaster of the pool. Okay, Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mary Blankley. Thank you, Melissa, for being here tonight. Adam, awesome report. Melissa, I, I just have a couple of questions. Have there been any wage theft complaints against Swimming Swan LLC since you've been owner?
Wage theft complaints.
Or any wage theft?
No.
Okay. Number two is, can you, can you and Adam sort of talk about the, the way that you're going to try to encourage the youth to apply for these lifeguard jobs? Is there a plan in place for that? Because, you know, when we held this through the city for years, this was a great learning opportunity for those folks to work for city government and get employed by those jobs. Can you just briefly maybe talk about the, the plan and what, how, how we can help support that too?
So let me, let me just jump in real quick, Melissa, and then you can, you can come after me. So Melissa and I have spoken about this. And we are going to use, utilize our own marketing efforts, because we want to obviously create those local job opportunities for teenagers, students who are coming home from college and so forth, for those in the, in the Gilroy area. And so that would mean, you know, using our, our digital platforms, you know, such as Facebook, our newsletter, you know, sending out information to those who have done it in the past and who still reside in the area and so forth. Melissa, did you want to add to that?
Absolutely, yes. So a part of the RFP was to ask for access to the pool beginning spring break in April. And my goal with our Santa Clara County Manager is to be able to provide as many training certifications that we can. We have asked to use the pool every weekend to provide training. Thus far, I am going to be offered paid training to our employees that want to come on board with us. Not only will we pay for their certifications, but we will pay them to participate. And then we will, you know, with all hopes, right, that they'll want to come and work for us.
Awesome. Yeah, I want to be able to help, help share that. The last question I have is just as you, as you get in more into this contract, if you start hearing from folks from Gilroy that, like, let's say are commuters that, you know, want to do lap swim, maybe when they get home from work at night and it's outside the regular hours of 12 to 5. Do you have, are you open? Are you flexible to, to changing hours around if you find that there's an overwhelming amount? And you could, you know, essentially operate for either early morning or, or late in the evening swim?
Absolutely, yes. You know, after this meeting, we do have the ability to go back and add to the schedule. And I'm already thinking about ways to do that, to increase participation and, you know, really get the entire community involved. There's some, some things that we can do that are like safety training classes that are not specific to aquatics that we could provide at the pool to, you know, for various programs. So, yeah, I'm open to it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you. And Melissa, thank you for being here. And then Adam, great report. And I'm excited to, hopefully this will pass because our community needs it. But I have a few questions. Melissa, you, you're based out of where?
I currently am in San Diego.
That's where your company is based out of, right?
It is, yes.
Yeah, and I see you've done projects in hotels, homeowners association in California and Nevada, right?
Correct.
Okay, just want to get that, that background. Adam, reading your report on sort of the RFP, it states that, you know, you gave vendors four and a half weeks. And during that time, you, you say there was, there was interest from potential vendors. Only two incomplete proposals were submitted. Do you mean incomplete or you mean complete proposals?
So we only received two submissions, but they weren't completed.
Got it, okay. And then you say the reason was being is because the lack of a base management fee, correct? And then you say, well, to, to encourage that, then we implemented a management fee, correct?
Correct.
Even with all of that there, we only had one complete applicant?
No, we had three completed applications. The, the other two applicants did not meet the minimum qualifications.
Okay, and take me through what some of the minimum qualifications were. Sorry, again, Melissa, it has nothing to do with your company, not at all. You know, again, if it passes, I'm going to be 110% supportive. But I'm going to go back to my broken record, local, local business. So I'm just curious what happened here.
Yes, so, so it comes in, it comes about in terms of, of the amount of experience. Do, do they have operational, aquatics operational experience? It's one thing to run a, a, you know, a swim team or, or to, you know, be a lifeguard in, in terms of in your overseeing lap swim. But it's another to actually run a recreational swim community-based program. So, you know, for example, you know, in, in terms of hiring lifeguards, training lifeguards, in terms of knowing what all the rules and the labor policies are, and the laws that in terms of regulate water slide usage, you know, swimming pools, in terms of the types of chlorine, having just all of that know-how. This is a very high-risk program. And so, so we don't take it lightly. And what we found were that with the other applications, just did not pass muster. Again, there was a selection committee comprised of members of city staff as well as Gilroy Unified School District.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Adam.
Okay, before I go to council members a second time, I'd like to go to the public. So this is, I know there are lots of, we've gotten a lot of public comment. And I would like to let the public know that this is the time, if you're here for Agenda Item 7.2, which is the swimming contract to open the Christopher High Pool for aquatics this summer, now is the time for you to, to participate in tonight's meeting via Zoom. If that's the way you're participating, then please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you are calling in, press star nine. I'd like to ask the city clerk if we have any public comments.
Yes, we do, Madam Mayor. We had two written public comments from Mary Yates and Adrienne Rodriguez. And I see four raised hands at the moment. I'll start with Cat Tucker.
Okay.
Go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Okay, I want to thank staff for such a thorough search. I think this is an excellent idea to have someone who has that expertise level to run this program. Because I don't know what it would cause if you had to hire full-time. Because I don't know what it would cost if you had to hire full time staff to run every aspect of this type of program. It would cost a lot more, I would think. So thank you um to staff, and I I urge all of you to please support this. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
Next speaker is Kristen Brown. Just give me one moment, so I can. Reset this, yeah. Cat Tucker, go ahead, please.
Kristen.
Chris.
Yeah, I just talked.
Yeah, Cat just spoke, so this would be Kristen now.
All right, let me, sorry about that. Now I have Kristen.
Okay.
Go ahead, please.
Good evening, councilmembers, and I am Kristen Brown. I'm a parent here in the community, and I am super excited about this program coming up here. I hope it passes. Um, having kids myself, I just really think it would be a great thing for the community. And like you say, job opportunities for these young kids coming up. My son's gonna be fourteen, so I feel like he could possibly benefit from this as being a future job. So I just think it's wonderful, and um I hope it passes, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
That would be with Teresa Graham. Let me move permission to talk uh and allow to talk. Reset the clock. Go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Terry Graham, and I'm a longtime uh resident of Gilroy, and I'm also the Chair for the Parks and Recreation Commission. And I was really excited also to see that um the opening of the swimming pool at Christopher High School is being considered. To have a pool open in our uh to our Gilroy families gives them a local place to go to have fun and participate in what can be a lifelong healthy activity. And during our hot summer days, it doesn't get much better than having access to an aquatic facility in our own town. So I really look forward to um something like this happening. I'm a lifelong uh pool person and swimmer, so I think this is a great opportunity for jobs and just um new activities for our children in Gilroy. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
That would be Matt Gupta. Just give me one moment. Go ahead, please. Matt Gupta, you are now available to speak.
Uh, good afternoon, everybody. First of all, Adam, thanks a lot for working on a great project. I heard the presentation, and uh a couple of question I have is the liability part, you know, very it the city of Gilroy taking a very, very large responsibility with the whole project. Even the supplier is making quite bit of money and keeping all the collection that uh come under way. We still is responsible for lots of lot of thing. Before you approve this project, my humble request to you and the council member and Madam Mayor is please do not rush to pass the project tonight. I want to look at the contract, look at the liability, life insurance. In case of incident, blame could be that somebody didn't polish or wax the slide, or somebody didn't do this and that. So I believe the way contract is written, what I saw in couple of minutes. That was very high responsibility on city. I think we need to look at again. Another part is, Adam, I felt that today you, other than representing the people or citizen of Gilroy, you are representing the supplier. My humble request to you is, please stay on the side of city, do not answer the question for the supplier. So so don't go for the bad for supplier like I felt you did. So please reconsider the contract, reconsider our liability before approved, then don't rush. Maybe approve next meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have another speaker?
I do not see any uh raised hands at this time, Madam Mayor.
Okay, seeing no other additional audio comments, then I'm going to well, hang on, we still have uh one council member has something to to say, so I need to to go to that. Closing the public comment, um, councilman, oh, your hand is gone, so maybe not. Do, I'm sorry.
I thought you had called on me, so I lowered it.
Okay, go ahead then, yes.
Sure, I I just have another question for the um for the applicant. I'm wondering, can you tell us uh what kind of wages and benefits you offer your your staff?
Wages and benefits? Well, in looking at the other cities in the area, um, we are going to offer a pay increase more than they are. Um, our employees will be part time uh seasonal workers, so there will not be any benefits. Um, wages, um, you know, we're looking at probably uh twenty percent, I would say, increase from twenty twenty eighteen.
From the wages that you looked at in um that we paid in twenty eighteen?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, um, Adam or Jimmy, do you want to address the the liability? I mean, I could take a stab at that. It's it's not changing, right? We're the property owners. We're the ones responsible for ma- for maintenance, so the fact that we're having an operator come in isn't changing our liability. But you guys want to address that?
Mayor, I'm gonna ask Leanne to jump in. Uh, we spent a considerable amount of time with our polling authority to evaluate this. This is uh, this has to be signed off by a lot of people who are experts in this area, and Leanne can explain that to you.
Great.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, so Recreation Manager Adam Henning and myself uh discussed this contract numerous times um as we were working our way through this process. And by by bringing in an outside contractor to provide this service, we want to ensure that we uh shift all risk and liability to the contractor. Sorry, Melissa, but that's just the way this works. Um, if you're gonna run the program and be in charge of the program and control the pool site and the employees there, then with that comes the the risk and liability associated with that program. And so in the contract, we have uh um increased our standard insurance requirements substantially because this is a high risk program. Um, running a pool, uh, there are always situations where accidents can occur. Um, you know, with children, and we have, we have the activity slide. Um, and they're gonna be overseeing that and managing that. So with that, um, we we put substantial insurance requirements in place uh to protect the city um and the taxpayers of Gilroy so that we can shift that liability to uh Swan. Um, if if a claim were to be filed against the city of Gilroy. Okay, I believe I believe uh the coverage level is ten million dollars.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Tovar, if you would like to make a motion that you can do that.
Yeah, I'd like to move for approval.
Uh, second.
Okay, so motion was sent by Councilmember Tovar and seconded by Councilmember Armandares. Sorry. All right, roll call.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Braco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Hi.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, and that passed unanimously.
Oh.
Congratulations.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, but thank you, Adam. Okay, item nine, wait, what happened to item eight? Oh, eight, public hearings, we have none. Okay, item nine, unfinished business. This is appointments to our commissions. So where is my tally sheet? Um, all of the interviewing, you know, was done. We have several commissions here. I'm gonna go down the line in the order of well, I guess I'll just go alphabetical because that's how it is on my thing here. And what I'm going to ask is that uh for each commission, one commission at a time, I'll reiterate the number of seats. I'll ask each council member for who it is they want to vote for, and I want to also say that you you don't have to vote just because you have to fill seats. So that is up to each one, you know, in some cases, we do not have enough applicants for for seats. In some cases, we have more, but that is up to each individual council member to place somebody to vote, that somebody be placed on a commission or not. And if it leaves us short, then that just means we have to continue recruiting. Okay, so I want to say that much, but do do what is right by you and in in your voting. So we're gonna start with arts and culture, and we have four applicants for four seats. So you can either name all four, or you know, whatever it is you feel comfortable doing. But I'm gonna start with Councilmember Armandares. Would you please name the uh up to four or all four that you would like to see on the Arts and Culture Commission?
Arts and culture, gosh, if I can read my own writing, I have um Camille McCormack. I have Frank.
Mm-hmm, there's only one Frank, that's good.
Okay, thank you. Um, Carmine, yes. And then the last person, last name?
Alexandra Purdue.
There we go, Alexandra.
Okay, so those are the four applicants for the four seats, so you're casting one vote for each. Okay, Councilmember Braco.
I'll go with all four of the ones that applied.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilton?
I'm gonna go with uh Camille, Frank, and Alexandra.
Okay, Councilmember Leroy Munoz.
I'll make it easy, all four.
Very good. Councilmember Marks? You're on you're on mute, Carol.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm gonna go with Camille, Alexandra, and Frank.
All right, and uh Councilmember Tovar?
New mayor, I'll go with all four.
Okay, and I'll go with all four, which means all four are seated on the Arts and Culture Commission. Um, Ty, our city clerk, do do you want to confirm that right here and now?
Yes, I do.
You know, yeah, they all got a seat, so.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Library Commission, we have one applicant for one seat. So again, uh, it's up to you as to what to do here. Okay, Councilmember Armandares?
Sure, I think we could go with Said.
Okay, Councilmember Braco?
Said.
Councilmember Hilton?
Uh, none.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Said, Nushabadi.
Councilmember Marks?
None.
Councilmember Tovar?
Said.
All right, and I will do Said, so Said is our uh new library commissioner. All right, Open Government Commission. Now, we have two applicants for one seat, neither one interviewed. So, Councilmember Armandares?
Um. I'd say neither.
Okay, Councilmember Braco?
I'd say neither either.
Councilmember Hilton?
None.
That was a none, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Neither.
Councilmember Marks?
None.
Councilmember Tovar?
Enriquez.
Okay, and I was gonna say none, but that puts uh counts uh Tia Enriquez on. So, right?
Not really, is that?
You had, you had six noes.
And no votes.
One, one. Oh, so it can't, okay, so neither one, I'm sorry, I was looking at it differently. Yes, that is correct. She only got one, and even if I had put it on, that would be two. So that is not a majority. It was just more than the other, is how I was looking at it. Got, because I think, isn't that how it is? Whoever gets the most votes?
That's correct, the way, yeah, it's 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 neither, because it was six to one, so neither.
You had six, yeah, she had six noes.
Right, so neither.
Right, so it's not that she got one and he got none, so she got she got more votes, okay. All right, so that's gonna go with an empty seat. Until, yeah, recruit again. All right, Parks and Rec. Now, here we have one applicant, even though we have two seats, so similar problem. So this is Eric Arrendondo. So Councilmember Armandares?
A yes for Eric.
Okay, Councilmember Braco?
Eric.
Councilmember Hilton?
Eric.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Eric.
Councilmember Marks?
Eric.
Councilmember Tovar?
Eric.
All right, myself too, so that's seven votes, so we have one of two filled on Parks and Rec. Okay, Personnel Commission. It's my understanding that Annie Tomasello has withdrawn, is that correct? Uh. Tom, I'm asking the city clerk, is that correct?
Yes, I uh let me make confirm with, I think Leanne sent me that information just recently.
Yeah, it's okay, it's just, I want to make sure.
Yes, that is the information I received from uh Ms. Tomasello.
Okay, so everybody, you can, um, Annie's withdrawn, so that leaves three applicants, one incumbent, a total of three for two seats.
Mayor, could you remind us who interviewed those?
Yes, absolutely. Marissa Haro interviewed.
Right.
Sergio Patterson interviewed, and Nita Eddie Mitchell, who's the incumbent, interviewed. Okay, we had another one. Yes, we had another one who interviewed, but his address turned out to be outside.
Oh, that's the one, thank you.
Right, so that's what why you are left with three choices for two seats. Okay, so Councilmember Armandares, who would your two be?
Uh, Marissa Haro and Nita Mitchell.
Okay, Councilmember Braco?
Marissa and Nita.
Councilmember Hilton?
Marissa and Nita.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Marissa and Nita.
Councilmember Marks?
Marissa and Nita.
Councilmember Tovar?
Anita and Marissa.
And I'm doing the same, okay, so they each got seven. So Marissa and Nita Eddie Mitchell are our two new personnel commissioners. And we thank Annie Tomasello, outgoing Annie, her service. Okay, Planning Commission, and our last one. So this one is two seats. We had seven applicants, four of whom interviewed. And uh, if you want reminders, Anador Kushner interviewed, Adriana Leongart interviewed, David Matuzak interviewed, and Zentis Reeks interviewed. And then we had, you you see all the other applicants there, okay? So out of the seven, I need each to pick two, if you if you would appoint two. All right, so Councilmember Armandares?
Uh, Anador Kushner and Adriana Leongart.
Okay, Councilmember Braco?
Anador and Zentas.
All right, Councilmember Hilton?
Anador and Adriana.
Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Zentis and David.
Okay, Councilmember Marks?
Anador and Adriana.
Councilmember Tovar? You're on mute, if you said.
I'm sorry, Adriana and David.
Adriana and David. Okay, and I'm gonna go with Anador and Adriana, which means, so uh Ty, I come up with five for Anador, five for Adriana, two for David, and two for Zentis.
Yes, I got the same thing.
Okay, so Anador and Adriana then are our new planning commissioners. Okay, thank you, everybody. We are done, done with that.
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Did you still want to take public comment on this?
Public comment on, yeah, okay, sorry. Absolutely, I guess I should have done that before we voted. Yep, is there any public comment on this?
I did not receive any written public comments, nor do I see any raised hands.
You, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. No, I'm sorry, I I missed that entirely, okay? All right. Item ten, ten point one, this is, well, ten, Introduction to New Business, ten point one. Consent of the Appointment of John Biggs as Interim Community Development Director, Retired Innuitant, Effective February eighth, twenty twenty-two, and Adoption of a Resolution of the City Council of the City of Gilroy, Approving the Exception to the one hundred and eighty day wait period for John Biggs and Approving the Interim Appointment and Employment Agreement pursuant to California Government Code two one two two one H. And Leanne is going to be telling us all about it.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Um, as to give you a little bit of background, due to the recent resignation of our Community Development Director just before the holidays, uh, we have a vacancy in this position. And we commenced a recruitment on February first uh to fill this position, but it as as with many recruitment processes, especially those at the executive level, it will take some time to uh go through that selection process. as, as with many recruitment processes, especially those at the executive level, it will take some time to go through that selection process. In the meantime, we've been on the lookout for someone who could serve as our interim Community Development Director to provide some assistance and leadership until we can get the position filled. Former Los Altos Community Development Director John Biggs, and Councilmember Tovar, he's a Gilroy resident, is able to serve as the interim Community Development Director. Mr. Biggs is a California Public Employees Retirement System Retired Inuitant, and he retired at the end of December 2021. He does have the education, skills, and experience to hit the ground running and to serve as our interim Community Development Director starting tomorrow. Mr. Biggs has over 20 years of related municipal work experience. As I mentioned, he was the Community Development Director in Los Altos, and he'd held that position for five years. And then prior to Los Altos, Mr. Biggs served in the communities of Pismo Beach, Alameda, and Pacific Grove. So he's worked in a variety of different places and will bring that experience and expertise to Gilroy. He has a bachelor's degree in urban planning from San Jose State, and he also has some related certifications. So the CalPERS process is kind of complicated, and there are certain rules we have to follow if we want to hire a retired inuitant. And it's super important that we carefully follow those regulations, not only to protect the City of Gilroy, but to also protect Mr. Biggs. Because he retired and he wants to keep his retirement and doesn't want to jeopardize that in any way. So we carefully follow these regulations. So Government Code Section 21221H allows an agency to hire a retired inuitant to serve in an interim position when there is an immediate need for expertise and specialized skills, and a recruitment is underway. So we've met that requirement because Mr. Biggs has the expertise, we have the need, and we've already started the recruitment. The retired inuitant cannot work more than 960 hours in a fiscal year and cannot receive any compensation other than the hourly rate of pay for the work performed by other employees performing comparable duties. And we've addressed that in the employment agreement. There is a Governor's Executive Order that is currently in place. It's Executive Order N-1221. This was put in place due to the COVID crisis and the difficulty that agencies are having in filling positions and keeping up with the workload and the additional workload that we all have to comply with all the different COVID regulations. And so that Governor's Order does allow, in some instances, for retirees to go beyond the 960 hours. I'm not anticipating that with Mr. Biggs, but it is there in case it would become necessary. And then there were other changes when the Pension Reform Act went into place. And one of those changes requires retired inuitants to be separated from employment for at least 180 days before returning to work for an employer that belongs to the same retirement system from which the retiree is receiving a pension. However, Government Code Section 7522.5 Sticks, are you tracking me with all these government codes? Because there's a test after this, allows the governing body to adopt a 180-day exception resolution, certifying the nature of the employment, and that there is a necessity to fill a critically needed position before the 180 days has passed. We have that immediate need here in Gilroy. It's a critical need for a Community Development Director. So there is justification to make the exception and waive the 180-day wait period. In addition, the government, the Governor's Executive Order, same one, N-1221, also waives this 180-day wait period due to the COVID crisis that we're currently in. But we want the council to adopt the resolution anyway, in the event the Governor's Executive Order goes away or ends at some point, that we'll still have the resolution in place, waiving that 180-day period and complying with all the CalPERS regulations. And then the last one I'll mention is that the Executive Order also suspends the CalPERS requirement that a retired inuitant, a new attempt to have a bona fide 60-day separation from all CalPERS employment if they, if the retiree retires before they reach the normal retirement age. This section applies to Mr. Biggs because he has a few different retirement formulas that make up his retirement. And so we have to make sure we comply with that as well. But because of the Governor's Executive Order, we, the 60-day period is waived. So we want to give you the insurance that we have gone back through all of these regulations and made sure that, that we're in compliance with, with everything to allow Mr. Biggs to come on board as our interim Community Development Director. The staff report contains a list of duties that Mr. Biggs will perform in the interim Community Development Director role. I will not go over those with you, they're there. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer those. There is some cost savings because we're, when we fill the position on a interim temporary basis, we're paying the hourly rate for the position and no benefits, so the benefits is what creates some savings, which is noted in the staff report. And so we're asking the council to approve this, to ensure continuity in the Community Development Department to consent to the appointment of John Biggs as our interim Community Development Director, effective tomorrow, February 8, and approve the resolution waiving the 180-day wait period and approving the interim appointment under California Government Code 21221H and authorizing the city administrator to execute the employment agreement. And we can begin the quiz anytime you all are ready on the Government Code sections, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Leanne.
Mr. Biggs here, and he can tell you about anything about himself that you, you know, more that you want to know about him.
Okay, so let me ask councilmembers first if they have any questions of your report, Leanne, and then I'll ask Mr. Biggs if he would like to say anything. Council, yes, Councilmember Armandaris has a question for Leanne?
Thank you, thank you, Leanne. Can you tell us again what kind of job searches or talent searches going that we're engaged in to fill this?
Yeah, we have secured the services of Avery and Associates, who is assisting us in outreach on a nationwide basis to identify a Community Development Director for Gilroy, focus being on California, because California has some pretty specific and unique laws and regulations related to the urban planning function. And so they are working on that recruitment right now, and the closing date is early part of March. I want to say it's, it's, it's like March 4th is the closing date for the position, and then we'll be going through a vetting process after that.
Thank you, and does PERS exclude Mr., what's his name?
Biggs.
Mr. Biggs from being part of that search? Or does anything suit him?
I, I don't think Mr. Biggs has any intention of applying for the position. If, if he did, he would have to completely come out of retirement and give up his pension and, and then become an active participant in the California Public Retirement System again. Yeah, but I'll let him speak for himself in that regard. I think he just retired. I think he's kind of liking it. I, I, I think when we, when we called him, he, he, he kind of paused for just a second and said, wait, I just started.
Who could blame him?
But I think because he lives in Gilroy, he wants to help us out.
Yeah. Okay, seeing no other hands raised, I'll go, go ahead. John, would you like to say anything since you're here?
Sure, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm John Biggs, your applicant or recommended person to fulfill the interim position for Community Development Director position. I have over 32 years of experience working in local government and over 20 years managing a community development department. And Gilroy is a community that I live in and I appreciate very much, and I would like to do my best to help out the community. I look forward to working with all of you and City Manager Forbes and all staff members in the community to help it move through the, the planning processes. So it's nice to meet you all online, and I look forward to meeting you all in person.
Thank you. All right, we now have two hands raised, so Councilmember Tovar and then Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Biggs, welcome. If you know, anybody's more happier than me to have somebody from Gilroy, so I'm excited, so, you know, so welcome. I know that you recently retired. Was that from the City of Los Altos, or?
It, it was from the City of Los Altos through CalPERS, correct.
Got it. Okay, now, because my question was going to be, obviously, have you worked with the city very similar to Gilroy, but since you're a resident of Gilroy, I think you know what we're all about out here, so I'm happy to hear that.
It's, it's, it's hard to be a planner and not pay attention to what's going on in terms of community development planning projects in the town that you live in, so I've been following Gilroy and the happenings on here for quite a while.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Hilton.
Thank you, Mayor. So coming from Los Altos, where I've always enjoyed riding, you know, my bike and dining, I, I love that atmosphere. I'm curious, how did your approach to staff in, in the balance of working with developers and writing staff reports so that they included items that don't just focus on cars? I know that's sometimes a thing of planners of the past, but really work to create that balanced transportation network that supports and encourages walking, bicycling, and transit ridership.
Yeah, we have a large segment of the community that does bike and walk all through Los Altos. And so we were very cognizant of that, and we would look to projects to make sure that they accommodated bicyclists and pedestrian needs, especially given the, the shared bicycle platform that is, is about. We had the Google Bikes that were quite widely used around Los Altos, along with electric bicycles, and we wanted to make sure that the development projects that came through were including amenities that would accommodate electric bikes. It was looking for secure lockers that not only provided a a secure place to provide a bicycle or store a bicycle, but also had a capability for charging the bicycles. And also looking to some of the projects that had underground parking garages with the ramps that led down to the storage areas for the bicycles. We were looking to making sure that the ramps or the systems themselves were accommodating the footwear the bicyclists used and making sure that it was appropriate so that there wasn't any slipping hazards or traction hazards for getting bicycles into and out of those, those parking spaces. And then working with the community, we had Greentown, Los Altos, that was a big proponent of bicycling and pedestrian access and activity through the community, working closely with them on efforts to encourage bicycle riding and then doing things such as our community events, we would have bicycle valet opportunities where people could ride their bike and put it in a secure location where they could pick it up later after attending an event. So, very comprehensive.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, seeing no other hands, I'm going to go to public comment. So for those watching the meeting, now is the time for public comment portion of this agenda item 10.1. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. If you're calling in, press star nine. So looking to our city clerk, do we have any public comments?
I did not receive any written public comments, nor do I see any raised hands at this time.
Okay.
Mayor, for approval?
Okay, seeing no additional audio comments, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we have a motion. Okay, we have a couple of things here, so first motion, Councilmember Tovar, would that be to consent, consent of the city administrator's recommendation to appoint John Biggs as interim Community Development Director?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
We recommend there be two separate votes.
Yeah, right. So is there a second to this?
A second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Hilton for this first motion, and roll call.
Councilmember Armandaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
I.
Councilmember LeRoma Yose?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, all right, that's unanimous. And part two, or item B, I need a motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council approving, approving the exception to the CalPERS 180-day blah 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 thing.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Councilmember LaRoma Yose.
I'll second.
Carol?
Okay, second by Councilmember Marks. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Armandaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton? Councilmember Hilton?
You're on mute.
I.
Thank you. Councilmember LeRoma Yose?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley.
Yes, that's also unanimous. Thank you, congratulations, if that's the right word. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to Agenda Item 10.2, which is the adoption of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Gilroy rescinding Resolution 202117 and adopting the amended and restated flying flags at city facilities policy. And this is going to begin with a staff report by Jimmy Forbes.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I do have a PowerPoint for you this evening. Can you give me a nod that you can see it?
I can see it.
Okay, thank you. The item before you is a follow-up to an item that we have discussed over the previous year, and it is the city's flag-flying policy amendment. The staff has followed council direction from May 17, 2021, when the original flag-flying policy was adopted. Some of those items that were included in the original policy was the commemorative flag, which identifies and honors specific dates, historical events, causes, nations, or groups of people. The, the, the first commemorative flag that the city had flown was the LGBTQ+ pride flag, which was the first flag that the city had flown outside of the traditional flags of sister cities, city emblem, and the United States and state of California flags. At that, at that time, there were discussions by council about the level of city involvement, staff time and cost for such events, and therefore, in June of 2021, council directed staff to bring back more information about modifying the flag-flying policy. In September of 2021, staff returned with sample policies from other cities, and council directed staff to incorporate changes into that policy. That is what we are here to do this evening. And so some of the lists that we had from council was a process of approval annually by the City Council. A required application, 150 signatures of Gilroy residents, 18 plus, including their addresses. The requirement of staff to verify the signatures and limit staff to processing application, acquiring of the approved flag, raising and lowering the flag, and announcement of the flag flying. So that would be the limitation of staff involvement.
Your program is not progressing. Are you intending to show the slides?
Yes, I am. I hold on just a second, I'm sorry.
Mayor, can I ask Jimmy a quick question while he's doing that?
Jimmy, do you want to take a question, or would you rather wait till you're done?
I can take a question.
No, I just, I just want to make sure, you read sort of what the, the guidelines are, and you said Gilroy residents, but do you mean registered voters or just residents?
The, first of all, I wanted to see, I believe you can see the slideshow now.
Yes, it's, it's advanced.
Okay, good. And the, the, really, the, the way that we've identified an opportunity to, to identify residents is by registered voters.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure, yeah.
It's actually in our charter, we discovered, that our charter says that they have to be registered voters, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so again, this is what I've read to you so far, and so only one flag flown at a time, and then the policy would take place in effect next calendar year. So this process would kick off approximately in September, council would review in December, and would begin with whatever flags council had voted to fly in January of 2022. Staff would address in the policy any needed waivers or anything missing that needs to be added when we adopt the final policy that would eventually come back to council. The proposed policy incorporates direction received, and we looked at numerous other cities. I'm sure as you can imagine that not one city does it exactly the same. But we took some feedback from other communities and those located around us and such. Some, some communities do not fly flags other than their city, state, and United States. So we took that feedback from council, and so the required annual application period is September through October, and as I mentioned, approved by council via resolution in December. 150 signatures must be registered voters, and the registrar of voters will verify signatures. That will have a cost associated with that, and council has the option of requiring that those costs be included in the application fee. Some communities charge fees for this process, some do not. Again, it's all dependent on the, the will of the council, but we did see both options out there. The actual processing of the application and acquiring of the flag is, would be the limits on staff time, as would be just raising and lowering the flag at the beginning of ending a month and announcing that the flag is flying. So that part of staff time would not be, would not be a great amount, it would be pretty minimal at that level, and that, the policy would also be amended to only have one flag flown at a time, and then the policy would take place upon adoption if council was to approve that this evening. Other policy amendments, application fee would be established to cover cost of staff review of application and preparation of council item. Again, that cost would be minimal. Again, that cost would be minimal, just to cover staff time, but again, different communities have done it in different ways. We did have a discussion with council previously about a formal ceremony and council directed. That we bring back a policy that the ceremony is hosted in very similar manner in what a special event would be. So that's a special event permit, so the applicant would host the event themselves. They would need a permit for special events, encroachment and facility rental as deemed appropriate by the city. And then any insurance fees for staff time to review application, the conditions of approval through established procedure. So we would treat this like we would in the other staff or excuse me, any special event permit on how it gets reviewed and analyzed and approved. And then the approval of the ceremony itself is separate from approval to fly as commemorative flag. The flag approval does not guarantee the ceremonial approval, so staff in December would approve the flying of the flag. But through staff review and approval process, may or may not result in an actual ceremony. It would be dependent on what's proposed by the applicant. The fiscal impact is the application fee would be proposed to offset any cost. But the specific cost is not known and would vary based on number of applications. If we only receive a few applications, as you can imagine, staff time would be limited, cost would be limited. But if we are inundated with numerous applications, especially when we have numerous ones in the same month. We could be spending a lot of time evaluating those, but again, we don't have enough specifics to know which way this program will go. Or the amount and involvement to determine the specific cost at this time. So the feedback that we receive from council is incorporated in the recommendations. And so council can modify, edit or reject or accept those recommendations after deliberation. But included in this staff report is a recommendation to adopt a resolution that would rescind the previous policy. And adopt and amend a restated flag flying at city facilities policy. So with that, I will conclude my report and answer any questions that that you may have.
Okay, Councilmember Marks, I see your hand raised, but can I just go, just ask you one thing about the permit? Special events permit Jimmy, that was just on your couple of slides back. That's only if somebody's wanting to have a some kind of event that warrants a permit, right? That I mean, if people are just wanting to gather, that does not require a permit, there's nothing there, right? It's correct?
Right, there there really is a distinction here, you know, if you have a free speech event where you gather at city hall and. And you talk and you you gather that, there's really nothing for that, but we're talking more about amplified sound. An extremely large gathering that may require some type of police presence due to the volume. Again, yeah, but we we do not want to to demotivate people to show up and exercise their free speech rights.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to make that clear that this isn't saying that just to have people there, you have to have a special event permit. It's just saying if you're going to have a special event, then you need a permit. Yeah, something that qualifies as. Okay, so Councilmember Marks and then I saw Councilmember Tovar and then I see Councilmember Armendaras. So let's go in that order to start, Councilmember Marks.
Alright Jimmy, I just have a clarifying question. Does a person have to reapply every year? For the fly flying policy?
As the way it is written, that would be requirement. And that and that enables council to annually review what is being proposed if things have changed. But again, if that is not the desire of council to do that, then that could be a modification of the policy.
Okay, thank you. Alright, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Jimmy, in regards to the financial impact, and I understand you're talking about staff time, but here you list. Staff time for reviewing the application, flying the flag, so I. I mean, when we did the pride flight, literally took a few seconds to put that up and down, so I mean, I'm trying to understand, there's a cost associated with that?
Well, as I described, the cost for doing that only is pretty small, we don't consider that an impact. Depending on, you know, if there's an event and you wanted staff to wait for a ceremony or anything like that. There would be an opportunity cost there, but again, we haven't explored with that.
And I asked that we we be very cautious when we look at costs, because as you know, when we did the pride flag. You know, we had determined that the sponsoring council would have to pay for, you know, and obviously I paid for all the other stuff that. Besides the flag and all of this, I just don't want to put it out of somebody's range that, you know, that they can't afford a five hundred dollar application fee. But I'm I'm just, you know, I'm just thinking out loud here, I just want us to be very cautious in the cost that we might charge somebody. In regards to the recommendation, I want to go back to Councilwoman Mark's question. So before this policy was presented tonight, as you all know, we had that large heated discussion. And regarding the the pride flag and it's my understanding, because again, this is a new policy. My understanding that that flag should be grandfathered in, meaning that we don't have to go through this with that with that flag. That it's it's going to be something that happens annually and it's not lumped into all the other flags that were, you know, we may be discussing. Down the road, so I would recommend that we pull that one aside and grandfather that one and say, you know what? There wasn't a policy back then, we created one for that flag, so there's there's no reason for us to lump it in with the others. That's just sort of my thoughts and, you know, just curious to see what other people say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Councilmember Armendaras.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things and a question. So first, I'd like to agree with Councilmember Tovar in that. I'd like us to be very cautious and conscientious of any fees that that we. Impose that they not be prohibitively expensive for organizations or people in the community. Who who, you know, deserve an equal chance to raise the flag or apply for the flag that that they like to be flown. And then also that since we voted already on the pride flag that 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 flag be. Before we had a, you know, a policy that that flag be grandfathered in, I would agree with that. And my question is, this is February, the second month of the year. If we adopt this new policy and and the old policy, what's gonna happen in the next ten months or for the next? Nine months, right, between now and the initiation of the of the next policy?
Well, as Councilmember Armendaras, I'll answer your questions in in order. The fee itself would have to be approved by council, council approves all fees that we charge. And so if we brought that forward to you as part of the regular fee schedule and you felt that was excessive, council is always able to modify that. We do that for different types of fees, some we charge a hundred percent recovery, others we don't charge any recovery. So that would be up to the will of council. To answer your second question, the process from, like you say, from March to, you know, the next year. Right now, there would not be one in this recommendation, because what we want to do is afford everybody the opportunity to be part of the same cycle. And so in order to do that, you have to kind of have a starting and an end time. Now, council could modify our recommendation to change that start and starting time. But we we put September just as a as a placeholder in order to enable us to start the calendar year off with the next year's flags. But there is no, there's no hard date necessarily required here. And there's there's, you know, it's just a matter of time, how you how you want to do the timing.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Bracco and then I see Councilmember Hilton.
Yeah, I want to thank staff, I I thought it was a pretty good. Policy and but I am against making different rules for different groups or flags. I I I think I would look really bad saying one group gets a special circumstances. Another one, they have to go out and gather signatures and stuff. It would just seem like you're trying to limit who gets to fly a flag at city hall. And I I I think if it was challenged, I don't know how legal that would be. So, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to repeat what Councilmember Tovar has already said too, that the pride flag, we went through that whole entire process. And I believe that it should be grandfathered into it. I do think that this new policy, although I was against it initially, because I didn't really want to see any change into it. I do think that it does bring a more fair approach and a year long approach, so I I appreciate that and I'll I'll support that. And Jimmy, if you could just flag when the fee schedule does come up and where the application is, because that's something important to me as well. And oftentimes, if we approve a large amount of fees, I'll probably miss it. Because it's definitely a barrier that I want to make sure that 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 doesn't exist. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Leroy Munoz?
Yeah, my my next, my thought was gonna be similar to that. Jimmy, I I just want to confirm, we're gonna look at the fees for the application every every cycle, so every year, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And and actually, Mr. Hilton does bring up a point, the list of fees that we give you are is voluminous. And so when we, if if council approves that. You know, the recommendation, we can ensure to communicate that fee and highlight it as well, because that's not something we're looking to make money off of, to be honest with you. And we also would be very hesitant to have a number out there that prohibits people from applying. So we we would have to communicate that with council.
Yeah, that's what that's what I took it to to mean as well, that it's simply cost recovery, not in any way trying to exclude anybody or gouge anybody for costing. Alright, thank you.
Okay, I have some comments too, and then we'll go to the public and then come back to see how how we might want to go about this. But I wanted to ask, in our policy, in in the actual suggested policy that staff has. I want to clarify whether or not we are asking for the applicant to provide the flag. The actual flag or is the city purchasing the flag?
In its current version, we would ask the applicant to provide the the flag. And the reason why we did make that somewhat change is because then the cost would be borne by the applicant. But in the policy, we do have to review it and ensure that it's consistent size wise and and appropriate for what the what they're intending to do.
Okay, so that that's fine, I just wanted to point that out. And the other thing is displaying of the flags on. Actually, in the exhibit A, which would be the policy, it's not clear to me. The policy doesn't say, I mean, it might, we each might think it's clear in our minds where the flag's gonna go. But in the policy, it's not very clear as to where the flags will actually fly. Should the pol- so i- is that true? Does the policy in fact not specify that this is at city hall or at a city park? Or what what city facilities?
Yeah, it it's it's it is not clear and I would ask council as part of the recommendation recommendation that staff made to. To make that applicable to city hall only. We have numerous flag polls throughout the city and locations, but the only discussion we've had is that minute city hall. So the two points that you bring up, Mayor, that I would ask that we get clear definition from council is the. Is the the location at city hall and then the the previous item that we just discussed, which was.
Okay, so then like I said before, I go to public comment and then we'll come back to council. But I want to throw out there that, you know, specifying the which flag poll, clarifying that, who is purchasing the flag? I'd also like to throw out just for consideration, just to think so that the public hears this too when they comment. That possibly one solution to to those who might not want to suggest that this be a reapplication every single year. That it could be a reapplication, but for, for example, maybe the hundred and fifty signatures are good for two years. You know, so you don't have to go getting those signatures and paying the cost of verifying those signatures. And just so you still have to apply the next year to make sure that you aren't hogging a particular month, for example, you know, whatever it is. But not have the hundred and fifty signatures. Okay, alright, so with that, I think, and then I also want to say too on the pride flag. Because the majority of this council did support flying that flag even without a policy in place yet. And I I am a believer of supporting the majority of the council's vote. Then I too see that as something that doesn't need to go through this process. What I don't know what the council would like to do is for how long, like is that a two year thing too? You know, or a four year thing with council terms or when would you ever want to revisit that? Because even that flag changes, you know, the actual flag, how it looks. So just things to think about. I want the public to hear all of our potential deliberations before we go into public comment. Okay, so with that, I would like to open the public hearing and say that this is agenda ten, item ten point two. The time for public comment portion on this agenda item. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you are calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will ask city clerk whether there are any public comments on this item.
Yes, Madam Mayor, there are, there were three public comments provided to you via email. And I did see raised hands, give me one second, I need to get the participant up and running. I see Cat Tucker, Ken Sullivan and Eric Howard. Cat Tucker, go ahead, please.
Hello.
Hello, we can hear you, Cat.
Okay, great. Thank you. I completely agree with Re. You know, all the research that staff did and I'm appreciative of the fact that they checked all different cities. And I'm sure there was a lot of variance between the different cities. So this seems like a good compromise, I'm very supportive of this policy. What I what I would say though is, as as a longtime citizen of Gilroy, but just in general. That I would think that all these flags would not go at city hall, that I would think that the. Like in some of the other cities, just the city, the state and the US flag be at city hall. However, to designate, I would prefer downtown at the Paseo, because that's the property we own. But if in the future we ever had a plaza like we had hoped for downtown, that because that would be more visible. That would be where everybody drove by, whoever drives by city hall that much on Seventh Street. I mean, really, the majority of the citizens don't. So for those two reasons, I would say that you would please consider that, you know, maybe putting a flagpole downtown somewhere or at the Paseo. And maybe if you don't want to do it tonight, then at least consider that for a future. Because because really, if we're really gonna be proud at all these different organizations, then it should be visible to everyone. And downtown seems to be the place. The other thing is, I, you know, I struggle with the grandfathering thing. I agree with grandfathering in, but then maybe limited to two years, because everybody should have the equal time of requirements. So maybe maybe this time the the pride flag can can go by for two years and and not have to do any of the requirements. But then they have to plug in at the next cycle or something like that, because it should be fair for everyone. And and I don't know what you have thought about, but there's a lot of people, a lot of organizations. And if there's only twelve months in a year and only one per month, I don't know how that's gonna work. So you may have to be able to assign two facilities at once, maybe one. If you're gonna go ahead and do it at the city hall, which I don't agree with, but if you do anyway, then you might have to also ask about Christmas Hill Park as well. Because you there, you could have fifteen or twenty different flags and you have to consider that. Everybody should be treated equally and equally fair. And so I don't know, please consider that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next speaker?
That will be Ken Sullivan, give me one second, please. Ken Sullivan, go ahead, please.
Kim?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good evening, Madam Mayor and council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak on the topic. I understand this policy could possibly go into effect soon. However, I strongly believe that the only flags that need to be flown in our city, as I stressed before, is the American, the state and our city flag. I believe that all three of these flags are inconclusive to all gender, ethnic group and religion. I feel that if council decides to move forward by allowing the one group flag to be flown, as discussed in this meeting. Without being under the new flag policy, in my opinion, I believe that it's showing favoritism to that particular group. They should be treated equally as the same rules and regulations with this new policy as the as the rest of the community members will be going through. They should go through the same process of submitting their flag application. I disagree with the grandfathering of the flag in. And also, I was wondering that after the reviewing the policy, I wanted to inquire as to. How will the flags be voted in? Is it going to be the majority of the council? Is it just by sponsored by certain council member or is it just picked by the city staff to choose what flags get in? For each calendar month? That's all I have, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay, next speaker?
Next speaker will be Eric. Next speaker will be Eric Howard. Just give me one moment. Eric Howard, go ahead, please.
Hello, Mayor Blankley and, uh, council members. Um, my, my big concern with this is first off, is it city's role to be flying flags of every different organization. But the main thing is this is gonna turn very political. Um, it already has by showing, by what, uh, Councilmember Tovar brought up about grandfathering in one organization. Um, what about the, uh, thin blue line flag that, that was, they tried to get that in there, but they said, no, hold off, because we have a new policy we're gonna do. You know, that, what we did originally, really, uh, we did it wrong, so hold off. So why are you grandfathering in one organization and excluding another one that tried to get in there? Um, this is gonna turn very political. It's gonna, it's gonna divide our city more than it's gonna, you know, bring it together. Um, because when you have three or four, um, applicants for the same month, they're gonna all be lobbying council members, and they're gonna be trying to get their flag flown. And I don't think that's the best use of staff time or council time. It, you know, showing favoritism to certain organizations or groups. You know, this is supposed to be an inclusive town, and we have several council members on there that are trying to divide us, and it's not right. Yeah, you're right. That's right. Smile. Um, but yeah, I, I just want to say, this is gonna, this is gonna turn very political. And, you know, if that's what you guys are after, that's what you're doing. And my, another thing, um, you know, how much, Jimmy, can you tell us how much it costs for the registrar voters to verify hundred and fifty signatures? Do we know that?
Okay, well, I'll, I'll take care of responding to my hand later. It's not interactive. Are you finished, Eric?
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
I do not have any raised hands, Madam Mayor.
Okay, seeing no additional audio comments, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And, uh, I, I would like to, uh, uh, point out a few things that were raised by some of the, uh, some of these callers. Uh, one is, um, our city clerk said it's somewhere between forty-six to fifty cents per signature. So that's not, it's not a huge cost. And even if that was passed on to the applicant, it is certainly not prohibitive, prohibitive. Um, the policy as suggested by staff is, and as was approved or requested by the majority of this council for staff to include, it was one flag at a time. So if you've got four looking for the same month of March, only one of them is gonna go. And so to the one caller, it might have been Cat who asked, who, or somebody else asked, is this, how is this gonna be approved? It is the council approval. The cit, the city is just accepting the applications, verifying the signatures, making sure it's all complete, that the fees are paid. Then they bring it before city council as an agenda item, and the council votes on which flag, if any, to raise. And it will only be one flag at a time for a month anywhere. And that's why staff was leaning towards having this be looked, having the reapplication process every year, so that if you had four asking for the same one, council gets a chance to acknowledge that and say, okay, we did this one last year, so now this year it's gonna be something else. But it will always be only one flag at a time. So voted by the council, one flag at a time. The cost was somewhere between forty-six and fifty cents a signature to verify. And so those are just the things I wanted to answer there. Okay, so now, Councilmember Tovar, your hand is still raised, and then it's still discussion here, I hope, because there I, certainly a couple of things I would like to nail down before we start talking a motion.
Yeah, and, um, obviously, you know, we can't respond to some of the comments that were made, but, um, I appreciate the Gilroy residents who have spoken out, and, um, I do take their comments, um, very seriously. But when we talked about, um, being unfair and sort of throwing out some sort of threat or whatever it may be, I think that, those are the things that divide our community. Um, when we talked about being fair, so the pride flag, if you recall, Gilroy's been around for a hundred and fifty years, right? Until last year, no one else sort of brought up the recommendation for a flag. So we, we had many, many years for people to bring up flags and what flags they wanted. When we decided on the pride flag, it was, it was new, and we decided to vote on it. And again, I'm okay with the term limit for the pride flag. But I'm, you know, in my recommendation, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say what, how many years I think would be fair. But I don't see it as being unfair, because again, we gave everybody the same opportunity.
Okay.
Mr. Howard, again, I
Okay.
Anyhow, um, yeah, I'll, I'll stop there. Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilmember La Romanios.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So with regard to the grandfathering in of the LGBTQ plus flag, you know, again, it is, it is an issue we, on council here, the same composition of council discussed and approved going forward. To me, I would suggest that we grandfather it in for this year. Once we have a process in place, then it will fall under the, the process. But at, at present, it's the only flag that's been approved before this, this process was contemplated. So I would, I would recommend that we grandfathered it for the year, and then going forward, it would fall under the new process.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Marks. You're on mute. Still can't hear you.
I know, again. Okay, I like what Peter suggested. I think that's, that's a very good solution for, um, well, we're starting this whole procedure. Um, I think Cat's idea of putting a pole downtown is an excellent idea, because now everyone gets to enjoy the flags and everyone gets to see them. So that is a very good possibility. I'm all, I guess it depends on where all of our conversations go right now, but I'm wondering, and this is just a thought, if we, if we can approve some of it tonight and then continue to next month on some of the little details, you know, I don't want to see us jump into formalizing everything without thinking everything through. And, um, you know, and then making a mistake later. But I do like this policy. I think it's well thought out. I think there's just, you know, a couple of little hiccups that need to be ironed out that we can do. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar, you have something else you want to say? And then I've got a few comments too.
Uh, uh, this is actually for a city administrator, because you've heard several folks saying about displaying stuff downtown. Do we have a policy? And I'm not just talking about flag, I'm talking about anything in general. Do we have policies that prohibit folks from putting things downtown without council approval?
Well, I think it depends on what specifically you're talking about. If you're putting it on city land, you're required to have a, an encroachment permit. That would be for anything.
For example, I'm talking about, you know, the, the bike racks or, uh, the benches or whatever else, the flags, because every fourth of the line, we put flags out there. So all of that goes through a process, right?
If it's on city land, it does, yes.
All right, I just, I just wanted, I just want to follow. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands raised. So I'm gonna go back to the, kind of the little comments that I made. I'm, I, I personally do not, uh, sorry, Councilmember Marks, I don't support, uh, this coming back again. This is our third time right, addressing this. And I think that the council can always change stuff in the future. If we ever do get a flagpole downtown, we can certainly switch to make that be the place of display. You know, not here, but for now, we have the facilities that we have. I would like to suggest, and I, I, I might even go ahead and, and make the motion myself, that we approve the policy as, as is, um, suggested by staff, that we, you, that we have the application be every year, but only every other year has to have the hundred and fifty signatures, if it's for the same flag. And I like Councilmember La Romanios's suggestion. I think that's a very good compromise to grandfather in the pride flag for this year, so it can fly in June, and then have it go through the process. Again, it would only, like all the others, collect signatures once every other year, so that the application period happens every time, but you don't have to go getting all those signatures every time. And that way, the council has the opportunity. And then I'd, I'd also like us to, uh, to tighten up whether or not the city is purchasing the flag, and that is not a big, big expense. So it's not about the expense. It's about, should the city be purchasing the flag, or should the organization purchase the flag with the city's approval? And that we specify that this is at City Hall to, to start, um, as, as Jimmy suggested. Does that have a second to start?
I'll, I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, so that's a motion and a second, because that's a lot of information. I'm happy if anybody's got, uh, questions or something they want to say, now would be the time. Wow, none. Okay, that means we want to do a roll call? Oh, sorry, I can't see your hand. Okay, you're on.
Okay, oh, do you want me to go first? I know Dion's up. I couldn't get my
Oh, I didn't even see his hands. Sorry.
Okay, um, okay, do you want to add in there how the flag would be selected? Whether it's council selecting or a committee, because it's not in there, correct?
No, what's in there is that, what's in the policy is that the applicant will provide an image, or, or actually what's in there.
No, that's not what I'm asking. If you have two or three flags on a certain month.
Oh.
Do you have the select, you might want to add that to your motion, because we don't have that in right now, do we?
Well, what we have in there is only one flag at a time, so
Okay, but does it state in the policy that council has to choose? If it doesn't, you might want to add that to your motion.
Yeah, I have no objection to that. I just think that's already said by the
It's already in the policy. It says
Okay, all right.
The bottom of page one sixty-three of the packet says that
Okay.
Council in its sole discretion shall consider the applications and render a decision.
Okay.
Always, I will come to the council every year then.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Bracco.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I, I believe the applicant should supply the flag, um, for, just for the reason that the city doesn't need another, uh, responsibility of storing flags for everybody for the year. And this way, the applicant can bring a flag every year. And I think it just avoids a lot of problems of, you know, lost flags and, and this kind of thing. And, uh, the motion, as you stated, I could support that.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think the, the, the back and forth of who, who buys the flag again is not about cost. It was more about making sure, you know, it's in good shape and respectable looking, you know, not frayed, not discolored, not, yeah. You know, that sort of thing. But, okay, so we'll leave it. The, that's the way staff has, has it right now, is that the applicant will provide the flag. And of course, it still has to meet the criteria that's there in the report, and council has to approve it. But, all right, well then, I think we're ready for a, a vote.
Okay.
Marie, could we?
Yeah, I'm, I just, I want to hear your, your suggestions again. There's a lot of
In the motion again?
Yeah, I want to hear your motion, please.
The, sure. The motion was to approve the flag policy as, as stated by staff. Um, except to fly the pride flag this year to have the application process as states in the staff report be required every year, including the pride flag when it comes up next, not this year, but when it comes up next. But to not have the same application for the same flag, have to collect the hundred and fifty signatures every year. That would be every other year.
Right.
And we just further specified that we were gonna leave that the organization purchased the flag and that we are, the flags be displayed. So this would need to be added into the policy, because the policy right now is not clear. That the flags would be displayed, for now anyway, at City Hall, uh, only, just on the one pole, one flag per month.
Got it, thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Okay.
Um, I just want clarification. So, so the flag, we would have to approve whatever flag it is every year. But if it's the same flag, we only have to get a hundred and fifty signatures the first year, right?
No, every other year.
Right, so, so, so for example, if whatever flag, um, you know, somebody proposes, it's approved. So in reality, it shouldn't be up for two years. That's what I'm asking. I think, I, I
An application. Right, okay. And if somebody else wants to explain it better, I mean, Jimmy, I mean, or, or even Andy. My understanding of the motion that I am saying is, is actually this, what I read in the staff report. All I'm saying is that instead of having to get the hundred and fifty signatures every year, that that alone be every other year, as long as the application is for, is no change, is the same flag.
Right. But no, I just, you know, I, I, I get that.
Not approval, not approval, but the hundred and fifty signatures for application.
That you don't have to go through that trouble. You don't have to do the, the city has to do the verification of it. The applicant doesn't have to pay for it. Right.
So it's, right, so, so I think it, it goes to what my question was. So we would only have to, let's just say I wanted a, a fly flag for two years. I would only have to get the hundred and fifty, fifty signatures the first year.
Yeah, let's say it's the thin, the thin line flag, for example, because that's what we all just got comments on. Let's say that there's an application for that that comes in September. And let's say that all of the criteria is met. And so staff puts that on our agenda for December. And so we, we, it takes a majority of the council to approve flying that flag.
Right.
If the council approves that for the month of July, or whatever, whatever the month would be for that, then that same org, that same applicant would have to resubmit an application the next September, but would not have to get the hundred and fifty signatures in order for the council to approve its flying again the following year. It would still go before the city council. Every, every year, there's the period, the September through October, and the city council has to say yay, because we might get applications for a different flag for the same month, and that's where we have to then decide. And we're trying to make this something that doesn't become its own project, because obviously, city has business to take care of. And this is not supposed to be all consuming, but we don't know where this is gonna go.
Okay, yeah, no, I did. And I was gonna ask, you want, if you would make an amendment, you know, to have whatever flag we fly, we give it a two-year time limit. So every, every two years, that flag will fly, and in two years, every election cycle, obviously, every two years, then we, we vote on the flags and send them every year.
Well, no, my suggestion was that they have to reapply every year, but save them the effort of the signatures, because that's really the only effort that there is. Everything else is just writing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So that, that's the motion. It's, it's been seconded, so it's, uh, I think we should take a vote.
Okay, Councilmember Ambardaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Liro Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes, that's unanimous. Great. Okay. Next item is ten point three, resolution to approve four-hour limited-term parking at San Yostro Park. And Gary, there, oh, there you are. Gary Heath is giving us this report.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Let me start by putting the presentation up. Let me see here if you can go ahead and see this and share that. You see that, okay?
There it is.
Very good. All right, let me start the presentation here. So, good evening. This evening, I have a presentation for you regarding the request for signage for four-hour limited-term parking at San Yostro Park. City staff has worked with the neighborhood and the neighbors of San Yostro Park, uh, specifically the San Yostro and Web of Vita Group to develop effective traffic and parking safety measures for the area. Uh, this parking issue is one of the issues that is a concern to the neighborhood. Uh, and it's really has to do with uh, parking along that frontage of the park, both on Lewis and on Murray, uh, which is currently being used as long-term parking by the adjacent residents, uh, which doesn't allow for the park users to go ahead and use the parking along that park frontage. Uh, after discussions, it was determined that four-hour parking would meet the needs of the park users. Uh, and that four-hour parking would be, uh, recommended again, both along both frontages, Lewis and Murray. Uh, and it's supported by the commission and then whoever, uh, Vita area. Uh, opening up this area would increase the available on-street parking for the park users and also accommodate the newly increased parking demand, uh, due to the new family resource center that is opening in the park. Here's a photo or, or, um, aerial view of the park itself. The red is the area that we are looking to recommend the four-hour parking. It is not along the residential frontage, just the park frontage on both Murray and on Lewis Street. Uh, it would affect about thirty-nine parking spaces in total. And the signage would read four-hour parking, Monday through Friday, between the hours of seven AM and eleven PM. Uh, this would go ahead and allow the residents to park and use, uh, that parking, uh, during times when the park is not open. Uh, and the PD will enforce the parking restrictions once those signs are installed. Section fifteen sixty-nine of our Gilroy Municipal Code requires a resolution of the city council to install signs to regulate on-street parking times. And this is the language from that code section, uh, specifically, which gives you the authority uh, by resolution to install those signs. So with that, staff is recommending approval of a resolution to approve this four-hour limited-term parking along Murray Avenue and Lewis Street, uh, fronting San Yostro Park. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you, Gary. All right, council- All right, thank you, Gary. All right, council, questions of Gary?
I just, one quick one, Madam Mayor. Gary, can you expand a little bit on, on the safety concerns and, and why we would want to, uh, to have the four-hour limit there from the purpose of safety?
Uh, there were several issues in the area that were brought up due to sa- that were safety types of issues um, that were brought up by the neighborhood. This is more of a parking and a park usage type of, of issue that was brought up. Some of the safety issues were around speeding vehicles, the need for traffic calming, those types of things, which staff is working on. We'll be bringing that back to council at a later time. But this is something that was quick. It was easy for us to go ahead and, uh, hopefully bring for approval. Uh, purchase the signs and then install them out there along the park frontage relatively quickly.
Okay, so this doesn't specifically address questions of or concerns of safety?
No, just to, to open up the availability of parking for the park users along the park front.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Armendaris?
Thank you, uh, Mayor. Thank you, Gary, too, for, uh, your work on this and for staff's work on this. I know it's been a big issue. In working with the folks at Nueva Vida and at the park. You know, especially now with all the COVID services that have been provided there, uh, by the county and city's partnership. And it's been really hard for folks, um, staff and residents who want to use those services to find parking, right? Many find themselves parking really far away or illegally parking in residential, you know, in the apartment complexes and things like that. So I think this is a good, um, compromise. Um, and, um, good for the neighborhood, good for the park. But I, I do have a question. Um, do we have this kind of restriction at other parks, particularly neighborhood parks?
Not that I am familiar with at this point. I think this might be the first time we're, uh, putting in this type of parking. Um, but if, if anybody does know of any out there, please let me know. This, this is the only one I'm aware of.
It does, is there parking problems like this at other, at other parks, so?
There could be, but this is the first that I've heard of, and this is the only one, uh, that's been brought to our attention at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have, I have some questions and, uh, comments too. Most, well, this, I think this is the only park that has quite a row of parking that is not meant for residential, but that residents, residences use for not just overnight parking, but they leave cars there. I mean, I'm lucky to have a cousin who lives on Lewis Street. Otherwise, all the events that I go to out there, I would not have any place to park if I couldn't use his driveway. So it's, it's very, very difficult. And that's on Lewis, let alone um, on Murray. So it is a problem. And I know that, uh, some, some of the families are, when I've been out there for events, have said, you know, think about all the equipment that a fam- I mean, I haven't had little kids in a long time, but it's a lot of equipment that comes with little kids, with your strollers and your, the stuff that you bring. And when you're making families like that have to walk so far, because the parking spaces are being taken by, by people who are just in some cases, you know, using that, that, like I said, for days, or just trying to keep track of the seventy-two hour limit. That's all they're doing. So I'm in full support of this. I think it's long overdue. What I'm worried about is the enforcement. Because that's an issue we have even downtown. You know, we have two-hour limits everywhere, and we, we have trouble enforcing our parking everywhere. So what I would like to know is, is this going to be a tow-away zone, too? If you are ticketed and your car isn't moved, is it subject to being towed? Or is that, are we not that far in what this process will be? Do you know?
That is a good question typically. And I, I don't know if we have somebody from our police department who is here. Um, but typically, if there is a vehicle that is there for a longer period of time, it, it is subject to tow, I believe.
So we, that, what we're being asked to approve tonight is just to put up signs?
Just to put up signs for our parking. It's, it's something that is, uh, our code, uh, requires a resolution of council to put parking time limits on, for on-street parking.
Okay, and the enforcement of it, or whether or not it's a tow-away zone, is a separate, a separate thing?
Uh, we've talked to the police department. The police department has said they will, would go ahead and, um, enforce. Uh, but I did not ask them if that enforcement included towing, just the citation, if somebody exceeded the four hours.
Okay, Councilmember Armendaris and then Councilmember Braco.
Thank you, Mayor. And in thinking about this, I'm, um, I think in the name of fairness and because so many, um, community, uh, residents in the area have relied on that parking for a while. Fair, unfair, they, they do rely on that parking. Um, and, and parking is a, is an issue in that area. It's a high, you know, high-density, uh, residence. Um, can we offer a, a grace period or kind of like a, a warning system for folks to get for the police department to issue first a warning and then a ticket? Um, so that folks get used to the fact that they can't park there over four hours anymore. And also, because there might be a language barrier.
I, Jimmy, yeah, do you want to speak to that? Because I imagine that goes without saying. Do we not do that?
Actually, uh, Ms. Armendaris, that's our preference. Um, issuing tickets is not fun for the police department. We don't make revenue off of it. So we would prefer compliance first. And I, I agree with you. We can get people notice, put up some signs and let them know that what they've done in the past, they can't do going forward. And then enforcement would be our last, last choice.
Okay, thanks. That sounds great. Thank you, Jim.
If I may, we are also going to be providing public outreach to the adjacent residences if approved this evening and letting them know. So we will be doing an outreach campaign.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Braco, and then I see Councilmember Tovar.
Yes, Madam Mayor, um, just so you know, the police department just doesn't drive out and tow people's cars away. Uh, you know, for no reason. The only way they tow them away is if there's the vehicles wanted or something. And if they do tow vehicles away because of registration and stuff, they, they put a notice on it. It's usually thirty-six to seventy-two hours they give them. And our police department gives it to them over and over and over again. So that's, that's something you need to worry, that you would have to worry about.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. Gary, again, thank you for bringing this forward. I'm, I'm in support of it. And thank you for the questions that, um, Councilmember Armendaris brought up. Um, and the outreach that you say you guys are going to do. When we put up the signs, again, um, will they both, will they be both in English and Spanish? Because obviously, there's a lot of, um, you know, people from outside of Delaware that may not get that warning. Um, you know, that are Spanish-speaking, that utilize that part. So I want to just make sure it's in uh, the language that they'll be able to understand or read.
Was, was that a question or a statement?
Yeah, I want to know if we're going to have it in English.
Tip, typically, when, when traffic signs are put up or parking signs, that they're done in English, that's the standard convention. Uh, when we do the outreach, it will be in English and Spanish. And I could see us, uh, putting out some A-frames in advance, and certainly when the new signs go up uh, with language, both in English and Spanish, notifying, uh, the users of the park of those parking changes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I think we all know the, you know, how active Nueva Vida is in that area. And so they're going to be very, that, that communication system always amazes me. How are they just, it's, it's down. They just got it. They're very organized. And so I just can't imagine after a period of time where people now see, because understandably, when you've let something go for so long, you need to give them time to realize, oh, now we're going to make it, you know? Now we're going to say it's limited. Yeah. Understood. Okay, so I'm going to go to public comment. All right, um, now's the time for anyone in the public who would like to speak on Agenda Item ten point three. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you are calling in, press star nine. Uh, Ty, do we have any public comments?
No written public comments, ma'am, but I do see one raised hand. Jorge Mendoza, give me one second, please. Jorge Mendoza, uh, go ahead, please.
Okay, gracias. Bueno, mi nombre es Jorge Mendoza. Y si quiero agradecer al, al comité que se preocupó por ayudarnos en lo del estacionamiento y al concilio por su apoyo. Uh, realmente, si tenemos muchísima gente que visita nuestro parque y aprovecha de nuestros talleres y las actividades que hacemos para las familias, incluyendo los niños. Y por el momento, lo más importante, las pruebas de COVID. Y es por eso que sí necesitamos poner límite en nuestro estacionamiento para que más familias aprovechen de nuestros servicios. Muchísimas gracias.
Okay, thank you. Um, Vice Mayor Liro Munoz, do you want to translate for us?
Yeah, yeah, he was thanking us for looking at the issue. One of the biggest issues for the families in the area, uh, is that of, um, uh, of the parking and, and COVID. But with regard to the parking, he isn't supportive of that. So thank you for, um, for the comments, sir.
Okay, yes, thank you, Jorge. He speaks darn good English, too. So, okay. Anyway, all right, um. Okay, so back to, okay, yeah, back, wait, let me, so are, are there any other comments, Ty?
I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, so seeing no additional audio comments, the public comment is now closed. So Councilmember Tovar, go ahead.
I'll make a motion for approval with all the sort of, um, extras that Gary spoke about, the outreach and, uh, the signage and all that.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Okay, I think I heard Councilmember Armendaris first, so it's a motion made by Councilmember Tovar, seconded by Councilmember Armendaris, and go ahead and do a roll call.
Councilmember Armendaris?
Yes.
Councilmember Braco?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Liro Munoz?
Yes.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley?
Yes, all right, that passes unanimously. Okay, item eleven, city administrators' reports, citywide fiber optic project update.
Okay, actually, Mayor, I want to give one additional report very quickly. Uh, February twenty-fourth, I'll be conducting a Q and A session. A town hall meeting with residents in English and Spanish. And so for an hour or an hour and a half or so, I'll take any question any resident has. Uh, and we'll have some city staff support as well to, um, to discuss that with residents. Uh, I won't have an agenda. I won't have it'll basically, we'll just start off and see where people, uh, want to talk about and what they're, they're curious about. And we try to do that about once every quarter. And we get a lot, like, get a lot of our best ideas out of those kinds of sessions. So I'm looking forward to that again on February twenty-fourth. And we'll have some, uh, messaging out for that pretty soon.
What time of day, I'm sorry, what time of day will you be doing that?
It'll begin at six.
And it's just a general town hall, like, open agenda?
Any, anything anybody wants to talk about. And we'll have translation. So, uh, my Spanish is not near as good as Jorge's English is, so, um.
That's how I feel, too.
Yeah, uh, and, and so the second, uh, agenda item we have tonight is the fiber optic project that's going on throughout the city. Uh, we do get a lot of calls about this, and a lot of them are, are quite legitimate in their concerns. And we've worked pretty hard to try to communicate with this provider uh, about parking and disruptions to businesses and things like that. But it's not always successful. Uh, so thi- this is one of those situations where you have to pardon their dust. But I, I did want Daryl, uh, Jordan, our public works director, to talk a little about this project, how long it's going, and ways that I know he is trying to get our vendor to be a little more, um, communicate, you know, communicate a little better with our businesses and our residents. And so, uh, he'll give you just a real brief update and answer any questions you have. So, uh, Daryl, let me, oh, there you are, Daryl. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, City Manager Forbes. Good, good evening, uh, Madam Mayor and Council. Uh, anybody who lives in city limits has definitely noticed the large fiber optic construction projects going throughout town. You've seen the traffic control. You, as Jimmy said, you've seen the dust. Uh, you've seen some minor potholes or some issues with some of the paving issues, um, parking issues. We're out constantly trying to fix those. Just to kind of give you a little bit of background, um, we've, uh, approved dozens of encroachment permits throughout the entire city. Uh, three different contractors, actually, at one time have been putting in fiber optic throughout town. Miles of actually fiber optic in our town. And, uh, the project consists of, uh, a, a couple of different types of work they're doing out there. Some of you may be familiar with, um, some direct boring type of construction methods, where they'll actually bore underneath the roads and pop up on the other side. Um, and they'll, they'll have large holes on either side of the street that they have to, uh, uh, provide safety for. Then they have to come back with a, a pavement, uh, to go back over those areas that they've disrupted. Sometimes it's temporary pavement. It's not smooth. Our residents will sometimes run over that and have issues with some little rocks popping up, or just not as smooth as they'd like it to be. Typically, they come in with a temporary patch like that, and they'll come back with a, a more permanent patch later with a, uh, what we call a hot patch, hot mix that comes in there, makes it smooth out and rides real nice for the community. Uh, but you will see issues like that. Um, specifically, what this project will do is it's going to, uh, increase our bandwidth throughout our community, which is sorely needed. These large pipelines are going to allow internet access throughout our community to run much faster. Much more information can go around. Uh, for example, our potential, uh, uh, new, uh, Amazon data center would be connected to one of these large pipelines. Uh, and well, the rest of the community is going to benefit from that as well. Another, uh, uh, positive issue is that emergency nine-one-one infrastructure is going to be included as well. So we'll have even better redundancy in our, um, police and fire throughout town. So that's going to be a positive issue as well. They're also stubbing out to some residential areas and some commercial areas that currently don't have fiber connections now. So they're pretty slow. Uh, have some interruption issues throughout town. This is going to enhance that as well. So it's a great enhancement for the city. Um, when they're done, it's going to be fantastic. There's a few, um, issues that they still have to take care of. The Union Pacific Railroad, they're, they're trying to bore underneath the railroad tracks. And if any of you've ever dealt with the railroad, it's like dealing with God at times. It's pretty difficult. So, uh, they're running through that permit process right now. We hope that they'll get through that within the next couple of months. Um, so it looks like potentially we can be done with this project as far as the undergrounding sometime this summer is what we're looking at. They're about eighty percent complete at the moment. Um, but, uh, that's currently where we're at right now. Again, as, as Jimmy said, we're running around town with, uh, our inspectors, a few ones that we have, trying to keep them out of the roadway, trying to keep the parking spaces open and not to impact our city businesses, especially down the Monterey Street or down some of our gourmet alley issues. So, um, we're scrambling with them to try to keep, uh, uh, our streets and roads open and keep the, uh, the dust down as best we can. But, uh, other than that, I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm going to go. So in a row, I've got Councilmember Armendaris, Tovar, and Hilton. So Councilmember Armendaris, you want to go first?
Thank you. Uh, Daryl, thank you for your work on this. And can you tell me if areas like um, over the Luchessa camp, where we saw blackouts and, and students not being able to connect um, to the internet, like blackout areas, will those areas be, uh, part of this new and improved, uh, system or network?
I'm not sure if the exact connection is at that location, but however, the whole system itself, the backbone of the system, will be able to handle a much larger volume of data than it can now. I mean, ten to twenty times or even more than that now. So it will enhance it. If not directly, it will enhance it indirectly, I guarantee you.
Okay, so we don't know about the areas on the, like, on the fringe of our city limits?
If, if you have any specific locations that you want me to check, since we have literally, um, forty, fifty locations here that they're, they're running, I can definitely look those for you on an individual basis and get back to you. Please reach out to me on that, yeah.
Okay, I sure will. Thanks.
You bet.
Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. No question. Just as Tom and I just want to thank Daryl and Jimmy. I know, um, it's been a big issue with the parking on Sixth Street. And I, I thank you both for sort of handling that and trying to make it as easy on our, uh, business owners as possible. So thank you for the work you did.
You're welcome.
All right, Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Daryl, the only, uh, couple of questions I have is, so you're saying they were doing boring. Did they put the fiber in at the same time or in those streets that they've bored, can we expect them to come back and start putting in the fiber?
The fiber should be in the conduits already. However, they've got to connect them all at a certain point and make sure they're all, the connectivity is there throughout the system. So I'm not sure if they'll be back. They may be.
Thank you. Um, and also, when you're talking about like how systems are going to be better and stuff. Um, so you're saying that these specific companies, like obviously, you would have to subscribe to that service, right? I mean, this doesn't just give an overall boost to I, I think that was a little too general.
Sure, sure. No, I, I, no, I think that's, that's a great statement. It basically, they're creating a larger highway. Let's put it that way. A lot more cars, a lot more vehicles, a lot more internet service can now flow if you sign up for that particular char- uh, carrier and they're connected to, whether you're with Amazon or, or Google or whoever that is, will probably utilize all these as well, so.
I have one final question.
Yeah.
Um, and it might be more of a historical question. Has, has the city of Gilroy ever looked into creating its own municipal service for, for the internet? Like, would we be able to go inside here and, and, you know, run through uh, their system since they're using our ground, if you will?
That's, that's a great question. I do know we do have some blank conduit in the ground already. Um, Councilman Hilton, that we could utilize and pull our own fiber at certain areas, whether there's room in these conduits to where we could share. Um, I haven't asked that question. I'd be glad to do so if you'd like me to.
Thank you.
Okay, um, question I would like to ask is, just for those watching and hearing again, I look at this as a little bit like having patience with First Street. You know, that we needed all that. We improved our sewer lines and water lines, and it took forever, and it was hugely inconvenient. But it is all done now, and, and thank goodness. This has made its way throughout, I think, all parts of the city, at least as far as I know. And I know that, you know, we all, we all, uh, stumble every day over our own neighborhoods. When I'm out walking my dogs. How long can people expect? Because how long can people expect? Because like out where I live, they, they laid the fiber months ago, like it was August, September. When will they come back to do that hot seal? Because some of those places are so, it's almost like a ditch that you have to drive over and slowly.
Right, absolutely. Again, the major issue right now is crossing the railroad tracks. Soon as they get that done, they should be able to come back and hot seal the rest of all the issues that you're talking about throughout town. So we're looking at the summer is the goal for them to finish that.
Okay, so they will circle back throughout the whole city?
Right, we, we've got contracted another encroachment permit to take care of that. Otherwise, we have it, issues where we can make sure that that happens.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, anybody else with questions? Okay. City attorneys' reports?
No report.
All right.
Then with that.
Yeah, so we will, do you read first, or do I adjourn to closed session?
No, let me, let me read them first, because we're an open session, so we want to announce some, an open session. And also, see, it doesn't say any agenda. We want to ask if there's any comment on the closed sessions as well. So we'll have to do that after I announce them.
Okay.
So first, there are two closed sessions that are both conferences, real property negotiators pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six point eight, and Gilroy code section seventeen, eight, eight, seventeen, eight dot eight, eight, two. The first is Gilroy Sports Park, fifty-nine, twenty-five Monterey Frontage Road with the APNs given on the agenda. Negotiators, Jimmy Forbes, the other party to negotiation, Sharks Sports and Entertainment LLC. Under negotiations are priced in terms of a possible agreement. The second one is Tenth Street Bridge with the APNs given on the agenda, Thomas and Chesa Bridge with APNs and New Fire Station with APNs. Negotiators, Jimmy Forbes, the other party is the Glen Loma Corporation, John Felice, and negotiating price in terms of payment regarding purchase and sale. So the first thing to do is ask for public comment, if there is any.
All right, do we have any public comment?
I did not receive any written public comments, but I do receive, did receive one raised hand here. Give me one second.
Yes.
Cat Tucker, go ahead, please.
Hi, now that you have me, I'm listening to everything. I, I find it quite different. I just want to tell you, Andy, being on this side of listening to the closed session items is really not clear. So my question, I know it's legal. I'm just saying it's not clear to the person who's reading it and or listening. What exactly is going on? Oh, you're saying it's negotiation of purchase of, of land for Glen Loma? It's not clear. Are you buying, is a city buying the land, or is Glen Loma buying the land from the city? And I guess that would be my question. And of all those parcels that is listed on the agenda, who's buying what? That's my question. Thank you.
And I think the answer, Cat, thank, thank you for the question. The answer is that that's the subject of the closed session will be the relationship with Glen Loma with respect to these lands and possible purchase and sale. So there's, there's no more information than that, that's public at this point.
Okay, any other comments?
I do not see any raised hands, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then closing that public comment period, and I will then adjourn. It is eight fifty-seven. And I am adjourning to closed session. Why don't we take a, gosh, let's come back at nine oh five. Is that all right?
And the first item in closed session will be to take a vote to remain in closed session. So we'll have to do that once we get into closed session.
Okay, I'm sorry, Councilmember Armandares, what was that?
We have to log out of this.
Yes, everybody, right. You got a separate Zoom link. So we log out of this and log into the other unless we convene in closed session, and we'll take a vote then, like Andy said, at nine oh five, please. Okay?
Got it.
All right.